Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the May 8th, 2012 city council meeting. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Thank you, your honor. Mayor Jim Lane.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lyndon Melhaven.
Here.
Council members Lisa Borowski.
Here.
Suzanne Clow.
Here.
Bob Littlefield.
Here.
Ron McCullough.
Present.
And Dennis Robbins.
Here.
City manager Dave Rickert.
Here.
City attorney Bruce Washburn.
Here.
City treasurer David Smith.
Present.
City auditor Sharon Walker.
Absent.
City clerk Carolyn Jagger is present.
Thank you. First order of business, if you'd like to speak on any subject or for public comment, we do have white cards that the city clerk is holding up over her head here to my right to be filled out. And if you'd like to just give us some written comments on any item or on the agenda, please go ahead and fill out that yellow card that she now has elevated over her head. We have Scottsdale police officers Greg Carlin and Tom Cleary here with us this afternoon, straight in front of me. If you have any need of their services, they're here to assist you. The area behind the council dais are reserved for the council and for staff members only, but we do have facilities over here to my immediate left under that exit sign and restroom sign for your convenience. We will go ahead and then proceed with the pledge of allegiance, and I'd ask councilwoman, or rather Vice Mayor, if you could lead us in the pledge. Please rise. I don't have a formal invocation this evening, so I would ask that we all take just a moment of silence to consider those who are in greater distress in this world than ourselves. Thank you. We, as you may know, we have construction underway on the $42.8 million expansion on the Tony Nelson Equestrian Center at Westworld. And when incomplete, the modernized facility will accommodate horse shows, auto auctions, trade shows, and other events in a year-round, air-conditioned facility of more than 300,000 square feet. The Tony Nelson Equestrian Center at the Westworld will be expanded in phases so events can occur during construction. Work is underway on the first phase, the Equidome and the South Hall areas. Completion is set for fall of 2012. And Phase Two, which will expand the North Hall, will be open for events in summer of 2013. The project is scheduled to be complete in October 2013. Okay, Mr. Rickert, I understand there is a city manager's report.
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted the fire chief, Garrett Olson, to give us some good news about our outstanding medical and emergency services that have been provided to Scottsdale in the last month. One of the things that's always important is public safety and if you are in need of the fire department, and these are really good statistics that I wanted you to be aware of.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you probably recall, a couple of weeks ago during the budget presentation, we discussed performance measures with you. One of those that we discussed with you is a term we call return of spontaneous circulation. That's the instance where our firefighter paramedics are able to restart a not-beating heart prior to delivering that person to the emergency room for definitive medical care. As we shared with you a couple of weeks ago, our goal is a lofty one. We're shooting for 26% of the time that we're able to accomplish that. And that's about two and a half times the national average. We monitor these performance measures throughout the year, not just around budget time. And I'm very happy to share with you that during the month of April, our Scottsdale firefighter paramedics realized a return of spontaneous circulation 55% of the time. That's five and a half times the national average that we were able to start a heart back up before delivering that person to one of our local emergency rooms. So great news happening out of the fire service. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Congratulations on that. Next order of business is our public comment period, which is reserved for citizen comments regarding non-agendized items to which no action will be taken. Speakers are limited to three minutes and a maximum of five speakers. There will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of our session as well. We do have some public comment cards here at this point, two. And we'll start with Pam Cruisen and followed by Howard Myers.
Good afternoon. I'm Pam Cruisen, 4130 East Lakeside Lane, 85253. I am also board president of Scottsdale Prevention Institute, for which I am here today. What I want to do really is thank you all for your continuing support of the prevention services for our children in the schools. For the past 25 years that I have been a Realtor, I have been proud and privileged to talk about what a great support the city of Scottsdale has for its children in a prevention mode, because that is really the basis of a wonderful community. I have heard a rumor or a fact, I don't know which it is, that there is going to be a recommendation to cut $28,000 from the stipend that Scottsdale has always given to Scottsdale Prevention Institute. And I don't know quite now why. We're well-regarded. We collaborate exclusively with your money, with the Scottsdale School District, to provide compatible, comprehensive prevention. So that would equate to about 600 hours of SBI services to the children. Last year, well, as far as this year goes, because we're almost through, we only work on a 30-week school year in the schools. SBI has served 5,800 different students, and we have made 17,800 contacts with the adults, because it's difficult to work with children when you don't also work with parents. We have worked with 2,600 single adult contacts, new, different adult contacts, and 5,000 contacts all total for them. So I ask your continuing support. You have our continuing thanks, and we'll see what happens. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cruisen. And next would be Howard Myers.
Howard Myers, 6631 East Torndale Trail. And thank you. I've been an unfortunate person selected to bring a petition before you about the general plan, which I understand you'll have in study session soon. So I'll just read it as best I can. "We citizens of Scottsdale who oppose the general plan update hereby petition the city council to allow citizens of Scottsdale to guide the draft of the new general plan. It will be widely accepted rather than trying to impose others' vision on Scottsdale's residents. We further recommend the following approach." Number one is absolutely to find out what was wrong with the update you tried to implement, and that would be by talking to the people who opposed it and getting their comments. I can tell you the top two reasons from having guided some of this effort was, number one, absolutely number one, was recognize the fact that dissatisfaction with decisions you are making now and how those decisions impact quality of life in the city has led voters to rejection of the general plan. That was more a vote against what's going on now than it was against the plan itself, because most people don't really understand the plan that well. As a result of that, we suggest you end efforts to undermine the current plan until we, as a community, have decided on a vision for the city, and that vision will be one that won't be violated in such a way as it is now. Properly address the major issues of height and density. Those are the two biggest concerns of residents in this city. The second one was that the plan had no vision of the future. You can read it all through, cover to cover, and you have no idea what the city's going to look like in the future. And that bothered a lot of people, because there's no assurance of anything. So part of the next step would be to draft a real vision, and that vision, most important part of the general plan, is the vision. It must be clear and unambiguous. It is what residents expect and want to protect the quality of life. It is critical that you honor and incorporate the results of the past visioning process, combined with meaningful citizen input into a clear vision of the future, and ensure that the rest of the general plan update supports that vision rather than encouraging the change to it. And that vision must address the heightened density. Then three would be to update the 2001 general plan. Don't start with the update, start with the 2001 plan. Modify that plan to support the new vision rather than opening the door to change it. Above all, citizens must participate in drafting the new general plan update, not stand by and wait for somebody else's plan that's jammed down their throat. Number four is draft a strict major general plan amendment criteria. We try to get a lot of that in there, but raise, not lower, the bar for changing the city's general plan. It's supposed to be your plan of the future. It should not be easily changed, and the criteria should state that, and it must be criteria that cannot be bypassed in any manner, and the plan must state that. This is what Scottsdale residents want, and they want their property values protected through reasonable, reliable, and firm rules about development in order to minimize the impact on their homes, neighborhood, and quality of life. We do not want ambiguous and vague rules, which can be manipulated to win the city managers and developers. The visioning process of the '90s defined what makes this city special and what must be protected, and further defined the goals to accomplish that, and prove on the visioning process, don't trash it. Whatever citizens decide to change in that general plan will better define what will be in the future for Scottsdale, and it should support the quality of life and sustainability of the city. The process must not be put in the hands of those who would profit off of the process, and that's kind of key, and that's what really upsets citizens. So I hope you will consider all those things when you get into the study session, because those are the reasons that the general plan failed the last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Petition requires that we make a decision as to whether to take action on it or not to take action on it, or to direct staff to something differently. From what I understand, Mr. Myers, on this, and this is not necessarily posing a question, but if I got this wrong, I would, is that you'd like these items to be considered in the discussion, and I'm not asking for a response right now, but if I'm wrong in this assessment, please say so.
That's correct. You're going to have a study session on it anyway.
Well, and the fact is that frankly, most of what you've lined out here are things we will undoubtedly have to be discussing. There's little doubt that we would have to be reviewing certainly what was wrong. As far as the vision, we've already had extensive discussions about that. And as far as the idea that there was at least some consideration that the 2001 plan was really the starting point that people wanted and frankly wanted to stay with, at least there was some indication from our constituents that that was the case. And drafting strict major plan, a general plan amendment criteria, I think that's something that we certainly would have to do in accordance with state law as well as what our own guidelines would be. But with that, I would ask if there is a motion to either take action or not take action from the council. Let me move, we take action?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to be made to take action, and that action is to include these items included on the petition in the discussion process, as it might. Okay. I've seen no further comment on it, unless there is. I think we're ready then to vote on whether to take action or not to take action on this particular petition. All those in favor of taking action and inclusion, please indicate by aye and register your vote, and nay if you oppose. It's unanimous that they was accepted, 7-0.
Your honor, I just want to clarify, because we normally do petitions at the end, so I'm just making sure that the action that you took tonight was simply to consider this petition at the meeting when you discussed the general plan.
Exactly, and I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
That's okay. You were fine. I just want to make sure my understanding was correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'll move on to the next item of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 20th, 2012, and April 3rd, 2012? A work-study session of March 27th, 2012, and executive session minutes of February 28th and March 20th, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No comments on those minutes. I think we're ready then to vote. All those in favor of acceptance of the minutes, please indicate by aye and nay if you oppose. Aye. They're accepted unanimously, 7-0. And next order of business are consent items. Now, there are items 1 through 25. I should put on notice that item 12 was continued by staff, so is removed from the consent items this evening. So we have items 1 through 25. No cards, seemingly no comments. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items 1 through 25, absent item 12?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, to accept the, rather, the consent items 1 through 25, absent item 12. No further comments indicated. Please indicate by aye if you agree and nay if you oppose. Aye.
Aye.
Consent items are unanimously accepted. It moves us into our regular agenda items, which are 26 through 34, and we will start with item, of course, 26. It's a public hearing on community development block grant and home investment partnership program fiscal year 2012-13 annual action plan. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a public hearing to request the adoption of Resolution 9023 and approve the fiscal year 1213 HUD annual action plan and funding recommendations from the Human Service Commission for the federal, for the community block grants and our home investment partnership program. The city of Scottsdale has participated in the CDVG program for the past 37 years, and CDVG is a federal program that's administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that awards funds on a non-competitive basis to communities with a population of greater than 50,000. The activities funded must meet one of the three national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention and elimination of slum or blight, and meet an urgent community need. Eligible expenditures are limited to five categories: public service, housing activities, public facilities, economic development, and program administration. A minimum of 70% of our CDVG funds must benefit low and moderate income households, and all activities funded must be consistent with the priorities outlined in the HUD-mandated five-year consolidated plan, which the city council approved in April of 2010. The city has also participated in the home investment partnership program since its inception. The home funds are available from HUD through the city's participation in the Maricopa County Home Consortium, which includes the cities of Tempe, Chandler, Gilbert, Avondale, Glendale, and Surprise. Home funds may be used by those participating jurisdictions to support decent housing and to increase homeownership opportunities for low-income residents. Unlike the CDVG program, home funds require matching funds of no less than 25% of non-federal sources. Scottsdale requires their subrecipients to provide these matching funds. As a condition of receiving the funds, the recipients are required, the city, to plan for every five years to assess the services and the needs of the community. Our five-year consolidated plan, as I had mentioned, was approved by the city council in April of 2010. Annually, HUD requires the submittal of the action plan, which describes the specific plan uses of the federal funds based on the priorities identified in that five-year consolidated plan. The plan is prepared in accordance with the federal regulations and describes the needs, the resources, the priorities, and the proposed activities that will be undertaken that coming year. The plan serves the city application for our funding, which is due to HUD on May 15th of 2012. Our federal regulations require that we hold at least two public hearings during the development of this annual plan and obtain citizen comments. The city has hosted six public hearings with our Human Service Commission and to allocate the funds to the agencies through our annual funding process as we developed our annual plan. The funding process began with an application orientation, which outlined the application process, explaining available funding sources, and applicable federal requirements. The Human Service Commission has also provided a thorough overview of their role in the funding process and was provided an opportunity to review all the applicants' proposals prior to the hearing and agency presentations. On February 7th, the commission heard presentations from agencies requesting funding, and were provided the opportunity to ask follow-up questions during that meeting. On March 8th, the Human Service Commission deliberated the agencies' funding requests and made their informal recommendations on that evening. On March 22nd, the agencies that were tentatively not recommended for funding had an opportunity to address the commission at their public meeting, and the commission that night delivered their final funding recommendations outlined in the action plan and presented to the city council. We also scheduled on March 3rd a meeting with the Neighborhood Advisory Commission to get their recommendations from the home applications and their recommendations to forward to the Human Service Commission. Before I move on with the funding, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Human Service Commission for their time and efforts in reviewing the proposals. I'd like to, at this time, introduce our chairman of the Human Service Commission, Mr. Steve Rosenberg, to say some things.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and members of the city council. Each year, the city solicits applications from nonprofit organizations to deliver services to low and moderate income families. Applications for CDVG and home are evaluated and recommended for funding based on key strategic objectives identified in the city's five-year consolidated plan. It is the commission's responsibility to review and evaluate all the proposals submitted by the agencies and make funding recommendations based on Scottsdale's most critical needs and services identified in the consolidated plan. This evaluation process included several public hearings regarding the funding process, eligible activities, and amounts available, hearing presentations from each of the agencies requesting funding, and deliberating on which agencies to fund and the amount of funding to be awarded. Each year, the number of agency requests for funding increases while the availability of federal resources continues to decrease. We also continue to see an increase in the number of nonprofit agencies requesting funding from the city of Scottsdale who have not requested funding in the past. The funding process is a highly competitive process, and unfortunately, sometimes many good applications do not get funded. This year, the commission was able to fund eight additional agencies who applied for Scottsdale Cares funding with CBDG program income. These agencies would not have been recommended for funding due to the limited Scottsdale Cares dollars if the additional CBDG funds were not available. On behalf of the Human Services Commission, I respectfully request the city council to consider and approve the CDVG and home funding awards for fiscal year 2012-2013 as recommended by the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
I'll go through the allocation process for 2012-2013. The estimated CDVG programming allocation for this year is $942,333. It includes also reprogram funds of over $96,000 and the remaining program income from the sale of the Civic Center Senior Center of $646,000, giving us a total of $1.6 million. The recommended award of CDVG funds for programs and facilities and housing services this year will be $1.3 million. The remaining unprogrammed balance will be allocated to other CDVG eligible projects, which will be recommended by the Human Services Commission and would be approved at a later date with the city council. The estimated home funding allocation of $176,000 for 2012-2013, plus reprogram funds from past year's grants in amounts of $529,000, total $705,000 for home funding this year. The recommendation award funds for the housing activities for the administration. As you can see on the slide, we had 14 agencies that are providing 20 different activities that will eventually touch over 7,300 individuals. This graph illustrates the commission reviewed a total of 17 proposals, if you follow from left to right, and the agencies requested, the requests came in at $1.1 million for CDVG funds. This year, as a result of receiving the funding income from the sale of the Civic Center, which provided us an additional $646,000, we were able to fund agencies for 2012 for a total of $1.4 million. All 17 agencies that applied for funding, CDVG funds, were allocated full funding. Eight agencies requested funding from Scottsdale Cares and General Funds, who otherwise would not have been funded this year, have been funded in this process in the award amount as well. With the receipt of the program income, these 17 agencies will be awarded their full funding, plus the eight additional agencies will receive their funding as well. The proposals received, requested for the home funding, we had a total, the commission recommending two agencies for housing, for a total of $694,000. The recommended CDVG is broken out by public services of $365,000, which will be allocated to our portion of our target populations, which will be youth, domestic violence victims, seniors, disabled, and the homeless. $345,000 are recommended for housing rehabilitation, emergency repair, the roof repair program, for a total of $604,000 for those improvements. And we have $188,000 that's allocated for program administration through this process. The home fund in the amount of $694,000 is recommended for first-time homeownership opportunities through the housing acquisition and rehabilitation. Again, we receive $11,000 in program administration for this area. The Human Service staff, the Human Service Commission, excuse me, and our staff recommend that the council adopt Resolution 9023, which approves the 1213 annual action plan and authorizes the city manager to contract with HUD for the CDVG funding, approve the recommendations from the Human Services Commission for the award of CDVG and home funds to nonprofit service providers, and authors the mayor to execute those contracts with those agencies on behalf of the city, approve the reprogramming of the prior year's funding and return of the program income generated through the city's housing rehabilitation program to the CDVG line of credit and the Housing Rehabilitation Revolving Loan Fund. And that concludes my report, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I've got a couple of questions that I wanted to address to you, and that was, number one, do we have, and if they were here in this or in our council report, I didn't see it, but do we have, what was the total allocated funds from CDVG last year versus this year? I'll have Michelle Albinazi come up and answer that for us here. And there's a second part of that question, I suppose, and that is also how much of recovered CDVG funds from sales, proceeds from sales of CDVG properties or otherwise, do we still have banked to be used in future years, or have we utilized those funds in their entirety? Michelle, you want to take that first one then?
Mayor Lane, members of the council, last year, we were allocated $1,093 for the CDVG program.
And so this year, it's a million, is it $1,503? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay, and most of that, I presume, is by virtue of additional allocation of the funds that we've recovered in the sale of CDVG-qualified properties that we held?
Mayor Lane, members of the council, that is correct. Approximately $600,000 of that was remaining from the program income.
So that enabled us to fund all 17 of the applicants that called it full fund, full funding?
That is correct, and in addition to that, we were able to fund eight more agencies that applied for Scottsdale Cares and General Funds.
Okay, now, are there any other, is there any balance of funds that are still available to us from the standpoint of the sale of CDBG properties?
Mayor Lane, members of the Council, that is correct. There's approximately $181,000 that's going to remain unprogrammed and approximately $200,000 that's still remaining from the program income.
And only just from the standpoint of notification and full disclosure, those that were funded this year realize that this was an exceptional year for funding and that the continuance of that may be significantly in jeopardy?
That, Mayor Lane, members of the Council, they understand that as well, yes?
That we would have a sum of $100,000 that we might be able to continue to fund out of those, the sales proceeds of CDBG properties, but beyond that, we'd be restricted to whatever the allocation will be next year from CDBG?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. I see no other questions on this matter, so I presume that we are then ready to entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I move we adopt Resolution 9023.
Okay, now, I don't know, is it necessary?
Is that sufficient?
Is that sufficient?
Yes, Chairman, the rest of it describes what's in there, but there are more separate findings that need to be made, so adoption of the resolution is sufficient.
Okay, very good, and we did have a second on that, okay. So motions have been made and seconded to adopt Resolution 9023. All those in favor, please indicate by aye, and those opposed with a nay, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item is Item 27, which is our Scottsdale Galleria Parking Agreement Amendment, and this is a request to adopt Resolution Number 8957, which would authorize an agreement Number 2002 COSA-1, a First Amendment to easement and covenant to provide public parking with JEMB Scottsdale LLC for the provisions of public parking spaces at the Galleria corporate offices. Ms. Padian.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that was originally presented to the City Council in February in response to two citizen petitions. As you noted, it's a request to adopt Resolution Number 8957, which is a restated easement and covenant to provide public parking related to the Galleria. Galleria is the property that's outlined on the left-hand side here in yellow, and it's part of the area we've known as the Drinkwater Neighborhood as designated in the downtown plan. This area is comprised of a variety of uses, primarily office, there's also retail, entertainment uses, and restaurants. This is a close-up of the property, and in particular, I just want to highlight, on the north part of the building, you'll see a dirt parking lot, and we'll come back to that in a minute. You'll see reference in the report and in the contract that this is currently a dirt lot that is going to be converted into a surface parking lot. As I presented in February, this is just a brief background of the history of this Scottsdale Galleria, originally developed in the 1980s as a retail entertainment property. There was revenues from an IMAX theater that were going to be contributed to the Downtown Cultural Fund, but after the IMAX closed in the 1990s, there was still a balance due. In around 2000, there was a settlement agreement with the owner, was it Cell Legacy, on the balance of the contribution, and at the same time, there was an easement and covenant to provide public parking with the owners at that time, which was Scottsdale Acquisition. Scottsdale Acquisition is now known as JEMB Scottsdale. Today, the Scottsdale Corporate Center has a variety of Fortune 500 property, excuse me, tenants as outlined on the PowerPoint. This goes through the original easement conditions. First, the property owner had full responsibility to operate the structure, and the structure we're talking about, if I can go back, is located there on the east side of the property, it's the above-ground garage. There is also parking below ground, both below that garage and below the main building, but the focus of this conversation is on that above-ground garage. So the provisions were that the property owner had full responsibility to operate and maintain the structure. There were 127 parking spaces available free to the public from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. There were 200 additional spaces that were available on nights and weekends, and there were another 325 spaces available, again, on nights and weekends unless reserved for future tenants. After the garage had been open to the public for a few years, the Galleria approached the city and requested to use valet. They had seen some impacts from the nighttime use of patrons, and they were concerned for both security and then additional maintenance cost. The City Council did approve that agreement back in 2003, however, that agreement has since expired. To recap for today, the Galleria has taken, has reserved those additional upper-floor spaces for their tenants, and so this is the total number of parking spaces available today to the public. Again, 127 spaces available Monday through Sunday, 200 spaces available Monday and Friday nights, all day on Saturday and Sunday. So on the weekends and after 6 o'clock, there are 327 parking spaces available. Following the Council's direction in February, staff has been working with JEMB on a revised agreement, and this is the outline for those new provisions. Maintains, again, the property owner's responsibility for maintenance. There have been modifications in the below-ground garage to open up 43 spaces. There are 52 spaces that were changed from reserved to unreserved. Still a requirement for signage to direct the public to the garage. They are to make every effort to assure that their employees use the garage, and they are also a provision for private agreements with area merchants and primarily the nightclub within that area to utilize the upper floors of the Galleria. Also, in terms for the public, again, 127 spaces available, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., 200 spaces available on nights and weekends. The valet operations would be Thursday through Saturday nights, and in addition, as I noted before, there's a new parking lot being proposed on the north side of the building. That parking lot would be used by the tenants of the Galleria during the day but would be open to the public. Any night when there's valet, the public would be able to park in that parking lot free of charge. And again, that's the area they're located right now, which is a dirt parking lot. I do have two clarifying points. There are some minor scribners there that need to be corrected in the contract, and there is also a modification that both parties would agree to. If I could have the Elmo? It's on page four, it's item number seven. It talks about if, by any chance, that there happens to be some destruction of property in that north parking lot, as a mutual determination by both JEMB and the City Manager, that the agreement would, for conditions for the valet use, would be reconsidered. The highlights are, as noted, just adding the words "mutual" and "determination" by JEMB and the City Manager. With that, that concludes the staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Padian. We do have one request to speak on the subject, and it is Lynn Lagarde. Okay, I'll leave it at that then. The only question that I had, Ms. Padian, is that you had, you have on this slide the proposed modifications to easement and covenant, I presume proposed within this agreement?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So all of those bulleted items under that category are contained within the agreement? Okay. I, Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, we, this was a big firestorm kind of an issue several months ago, and we talked about a lot of things at the last meeting, so I just wanted to compliment staff and the property owner for putting together this agreement because we, and it's very specific, you know, with the signage and where you're putting things, what the hours are, what the valet agreement, so I think you did a very nice job putting this together, and so I want to compliment staff and the property owner for coming to an agreement on that and, which I support. So I'll make a motion that the Council adopt Resolution 8957.
Second. With a second, I'd like to speak toward it. Okay, we do have a motion to accept the agreement as has been proposed and seconded. Staff?
Would the maker of the motion be agreeable to the minor change that I showed for item number seven?
Of course.
Thank you.
And the second accepts that as well. I just would like to lend myself to congratulations on a job well done as well, because this is a hugely complex and a great deal of old history on these subjects, and it was great to be able to bring it together in this forum. So thank you, Ms. Padian, and your staff for that. We do have no other further comment on this, and I think we're ready then to vote. All those in favor of the motion, as has been indicated, please indicate by aye, those opposed with a nay. Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you again, Ms. Padian. The next item on our regular agenda is Item 28, is the Downside Risk Conditional Use Permit, 3UP 2012, and the request here is to adopt Resolution 9037 to approve a request by applicant for a conditional use permit for live entertainment in a 4,261 square-foot restaurant with central, with central business district, planned community district zoning, and finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met. Greg?
Mayor Lane, City Council, Greg Bloomberg with Current Planning. Case before you, as mentioned, is 3UP 2012, which is a request for a conditional use permit for live entertainment. Site is located at the southeast corner of Scottsdale Road and Doubletree Ranch Road. To the west of the site is, I believe, the town of Paradise Valley Residential. To the north is Residential. To the east is Commercial Office, and this shows where the building is located in that multi-tenant center. Closer look at the building in question. The applicant occupies the majority of this building, essentially this area here that I'm showing on the screen. There's another tenant that occupies a space over here. The applicant recently received approval for a new patio along the north and west sides of the building. In order for that patio to work, there had to be some minor modifications made to the pedestrian circulation in that area, so there's a new sidewalk that runs through here to accommodate that patio. Property is on C2 PCD. General plan calls this location now as Commercial, and this is the site plan of the Gaining Village Shops. The left side of the plan is north, and the building in question is right up here in the northeast corner of the site. This is the floor plan proposed by the applicant. The black rectangle in the center of the plan is where the applicant would like to have the live entertainment equipment and possibly stage. All live entertainment would be directed back in towards the interior of the tenant space. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions you might have, and the applicant is also here.
Would the applicant like to speak to the project or wait until we hear the cards? If you'd like to go ahead and make, if you'd like to make a statement, or would you rather wait until we listen to public testimony?
You know, I'll just make a brief statement for the record. My name is Joe Goford, 8683 East Vietnegocio, Scottsdale, Arizona. We've worked closely with the neighborhood, and most of the issues have been resolved. We've made a number of concessions in consideration of being a good neighbor. Most importantly, we've agreed to a stipulation that the use permit will expire in one year. We'd like to revisit that stipulation, only because if this, if this business owner is a good neighbor and does everything that they've represented, they will do and complies with all the stipulations. It's our preference not to come back and have to process another use permit for live entertainment. I think your staff report does a great job to describe the nature of the request. I'd remind the mayor and the council that it is a restaurant, it is not a bar, and more importantly, we also have agreed that all doors and windows will be closed during live entertainment, and we agreed to all the other stipulations that are in your staff report. And I'd be happy to reserve time until after you've taken public comment.
That'd be fine. Let's go forth.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have some public comment. Request to speak on this subject, and we'll start with Chris Schaffner.
Hello, Chris Schaffner, 7346 East Sunnyside Drive in Scottsdale. I hope tonight you'll consider this with a nod to the residents in the surrounding area. 240 feet, it's a pretty close distance. I live about 800 feet away the crow flies from Cactus Park, and in the summertime, they have their swim meets there, and they have a P.A. system, they announce to kids, and you can be in my backyard in the pool and hear, "Susie Smith, you're on Lane 7," and you can hear it as clear as can be. There's something about amplifiers outside that can carry great distances, and I would imagine the people there aren't having their ears blown out, but like I said, at 800 feet, it's clearly audible. At 240 feet, I think this is just flat too close. To me, the purpose of a conditional use permit is just that, that it is conditional. One of those conditions ought to be that it does not inappropriately infringe on the right to enjoy your own property for the residents that are nearby. I think this would do that. You know, it's ironic, I was in Las Vegas last week on a business trip and staying at the Mandalay Bay because their rates are good, and it's a good time, and folks had a suite next to me that were having a very good time. At about 3:00 in the morning, it had finally gotten so loud, I didn't mind staying up a bit, but I did have an early appointment. I did call down at the front desk, and I said, you know, "I hate to call and rain on somebody's parade, but it's awfully loud up here, and it is 3:00 in the morning. Is there something you can do?" The front desk's response to me was, "Oh, absolutely, there is. We guarantee the right to peaceful enjoyment of your surroundings to every guest that pays to stay at Mandalay Bay. We will send somebody up right away and take care of the situation," which they did. And I thought, boy, that's a, that's a pretty obvious rule, and one I think that would apply certainly to a city as well. So I would ask that in this situation, you think very carefully before granting a conditional use permit for this. I would also ask you to look at the conditional use permit that was granted up in McDowell Mountain Ranch. That was a much greater distances, I believe three or four times the distances to the surrounding properties there. And I'm not sure of all the particulars about it, but I think that ought to be part of the discussion here. Have there been noise complaints? If so, how many, and how have they been handled? And has anybody polled the residents that live nearby there and asked them how it's worked out so far? So I would ask you to consider those things and proceed with caution here that maintaining and protecting the quality of life of the residents that live here is of the utmost importance and concern for this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schaffner. Ralph Fattalero, followed by James Funk.
Mayor and Councilman, my name is Ralph Fattalero, I'm at 7272 East Gaining Ranch Road, number two, approximately 300 feet from the proposed conditional use permit. Those of you who are familiar with Gaining Ranch know that it's an oasis in the middle of Scottsdale where you can sit out on your patio, if you're fortunate enough to be on the golf course, you could forget that you're even in the middle of the city. I believe that this proposed establishment is going to threaten our quality of life. Downside risk, it seems kind of ironic, that name. To me, I feel like, yes, we're the ones that are at risk, and we're not, we're not part of that program. I know it's licensed as a restaurant and bar, however, their website addresses that they will provide transportation for their customers using... using Chasers DD, Designated Driver Service. While this is very commendable, hardly what one expects from an upscale restaurant. Of all the locations in this center, the one chosen for this bar appears to be the closest one possible to our residents, less than 250 feet. Evidently, any negative impact on nearby residents was not a consideration. Prior notification and involvement of the residents could have prevented this. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on April 11th and was pleased that the commission recognized the potential for harm to our neighborhood and recommended the one-year permit. Unfortunately, I think this only postpones the inevitable and the disturbance that we're going to be subject to. Finally, the proposed conditional use permit only applies to live entertainment and does not restrict the use of speakers or televisions outside on the patio. It's my understanding that this is supposed to be governed by the noise ordinance, which from what I understand has not been effective. In summary, I propose that the conditional use permit as drafted be denied to protect the residents from unnecessary noise in our residences. I believe the council should review the existing noise ordinance and see if theirs can be improved to help protect the residents from noise from these types of establishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattalero. James Funk, followed by John Washington.
Thank you. I'm Jim Funk and I'm the Executive Director at Gaining Ranch. Good to see you again. First, I would like to state that the community as a whole is pleased that a new restaurant is opening up in that shopping center. But with that said, as you know, there are numerous homeowners who are quite concerned about the noise impact and how it will devalue their property and way of life. This perspective does not come without why the citizens are concerned. It is no secret that in downtown Scottsdale, similar problems are occurring with noise and residents. While the majority of these problems are coming from bars, the common denominator is live amplified music. I know that Mayor Lane has been quoted about his concern and desire to address these issues. The simple question is, without specific stipulations within the COP, to control noise, will Gaining become the next place in that position? Additionally, in the Arizona Republic, when we talk about control, the City Resource Director stated that over 1,800 decibel measurements were made in the last year, but no, none resulted in violations. The fact has left Gaining Ranch homeowners questioning the ability of Scottsdale to govern this particular impact to surrounding communities. As written in the Scottsdale Code, no violation may exceed 68 decibels, no matter the duration. Reviewing the regulations of other major cities, I find the noise code to be not as technically written. Denver, for instance, has a noise code between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. that they cannot exceed 65 decibels, and then after 10:00 p.m. they cannot exceed 60 decibels. And what we know is the magnitude of eight decibels is almost eight times the amount difference in noise. So these cities are taking a much more stronger stance on this issue, it would seem. Possibly Scottsdale would want to review its noise ordinance and standard of 68. Reviewing Scottsdale 20-year plan, it talks a lot about growth over the next 15 to 20 years. And it talks about mixed use and redevelopment, especially in the Shea corridor, which we're a part of. My concern is, is that not only downside risk, if appropriate stipulations are not implemented in the COP agreement, that this could be a reoccurring theme throughout the community. And in the end, I think that it can begin to affect the positive brand that Scottsdale has. It is noted that the Planning Commission, after discussing this, did ask for a one-year period on the COP agreement because they wanted to have the establishment determine that they could work coexist with the community.
Excuse me, Mr. Funk, if you could wrap it up.
Okay. We support this approach. Finally, really what we're looking for, and Mr. Goforth has said, all windows and doors, we would like to see closed during amplified music. We would like to see amplified music end at 10:00 p.m. And we would like to see control on electronic, any kind of electronic generation of noise out on the patio to include if there's going to be TVs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Next is John Washington, followed by Susan Schaffner, or Schaefer, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, members of the council. My name is John Washington. I live in the Peaceful Valley neighborhood, which is about 200 yards to the southeast of us here in downtown Scottsdale. Just a couple of observations. The purpose of zoning, you've heard me say this a thousand times, the purpose of zoning is to separate incompatible uses. At its core, that's why we have zoning. By definition, a CUP, a conditional use permit, conditional use permit, is a permit to operate something that does not comply with the purpose of zoning, something that is not compatible with the area, the zoning for the area where that use is going to be applied. So by definition, out of the box, you have this in front of you as something that's a deviation from the purpose of zoning. That should be your fundamental consideration here. As to the notion that this is going to be a restaurant and not a bar, we've heard that before. We heard that in the case of the Mint, which created a lot of problems for the folks in Villamontreal that live about as far away from the Mint as this establishment will be from the closest neighbors. So you're already in a situation, you don't have to look too far back in history to see a parallel to things that have happened in the past that have been very detrimental to the residents that live in those areas. You know, I read through the communications that you had, the written communications you had submitted as part of your packet, and most of them were from residents objecting to the potential for this use to be a problem for their neighborhood. There was one gentleman in there who said, in effect, "I trust the city. The city has laws and the city will enforce those laws." Now, I don't take issue with that resident because frankly, when I moved to Scottsdale 15 years ago, that's exactly what I thought. I didn't move to Scottsdale because I wanted to come down to City Hall with a pitchfork and a torch. I wanted to move to Scottsdale and enjoy peaceful, quiet living in Peaceful Valley. And to that gentleman, I would only say, Mr. Schaefer's reference to Las Vegas is completely appropriate here. Don't bet on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Sue Schaefer?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak at this meeting. I own two units at the pavilions in Gaining Ranch for the sole purpose of renting them. And someday we hope to live there, but in the meantime, we're renting them out. One of them is 250 feet from the Downside Risk.
Excuse me, Ms. Schaefer, I'm sorry, but just trying to stay with our normal procedure. Could you give us your address here in Scottsdale?
Oh, sorry. 7272 East Gaining Ranch Road, number four.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. And we rent this unit to people that are here for just the winter. And being that close would be really a deterrent for us renting it. Being that it's only 250 feet, already I can hear hammering and sawing, which is fine, but amplified music would be much louder. My request for you to consider is no outside speakers, no TV sound outside, if they have TVs, no sound on. And really, if you go to a bar with TVs, you can't hear it anyway, so just turn the sound off. Windows and doors should be kept closed to contain the music inside and the music should end at 10:00. Downside Risk will be the only restaurant and bar in the area with live music, with the exception of Wally's on Villa Ventura, which has music only occasionally with a special use permit, and the Hyatt Hotel, which has music Mondays through Thursdays, 7:00 to 8:30, and Fridays and Saturdays, 7:30 to 10:00 with a half hour break. Ideally, I would request that Downside Risk have no music on Sundays, but that might be reaching. I ask you to seriously consider denying the COP permit for the Downside Risk. If the Downsize Risk is an upscale restaurant and not a bar, as Mr. Miller stated at the Planning Commission meeting on April 11th, this shouldn't be a problem. Please consider the residents of Gaining Ranch when you are making your decision. Again, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. We do have an additional card. I believe it's Peter Langton. Pardon me if I have that wrong. Or Langton, or do I, am I drawing a participant?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My address is 7272 East Gaining Ranch Road, number 103.
And is it, is it Peter Langton?
Lenton. L-E-N-T-O-N. And as, as the other speakers, the rear of my property, I can actually see the subject property and share those concerns in terms of the noise issues and would like, look to you to enforce through stipulation, noise abatement, both in the form of prohibition of the speakers outside, prohibition of televisions outside, other noise controls, no live music outside. And during the term that there is live music being generated inside, I'd look to you to require that all egresses and ingresses, including windows and doors, be closed. Furthermore, recommend that in order that, at times that doors are being operated, that there be a double door system to attenuate any noise that's generated from the inside, which is typical of noise generating venues such as nightclubs. I share the other folks' concerns just in terms of the questionable representation of this property as a bar, or as a restaurant rather than a bar, as a, as a patron of other Downside Risk establishments here. I can tell you that when I went in there, I went in there to, for a beer, not to, not to eat dinner. And I think that was probably the case with the, with the vast majority of other patrons of the establishment. So furthermore, I think, as a show of good faith, I'd look, look to the permee to be affirmative in terms of submitting to a regular audit to show that as required by the liquor license, that the permee is in fact generating 60% of their revenue through the sales of food and being in compliance with that, with that permit. And then finally, I think, again, as a show of good faith and given the fact that, that these folks operate other similar establishments, I'd recommend that the permee also stipulate that if there are two noise offenses within the month, and obviously that would need to come from the administrative code, that, that the permit be suspended until we have another council meeting and go through this whole thing again. And I think that's probably it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenton. That completes the public testimony on this item. Mr. Goforth, if you would like to respond, I'd be happy to have you respond to some of those comments, if you want to take a few moments for that.
I was going to ask to adjourn while my supporters showed up, but let me just go over a few things. First, the Arizona State Department of Liquor License does require that audit and that is pretty much taken care of in terms of monitoring noise offenses. I think that's a great idea, is we don't intend to have any noise offenses. John Washington brought up the notion of compatibility. And not to be remedial, I would simply point out that this property is abound by C2 PCD to the west and to the south, by CO PCD to the east, and by R5, the city's most dense multifamily residential designation, to the north, not including Gaining Ranch. Additionally, Doubletree Ranch Road is a minor arterial with over 16,000 trips per day. Scottsdale Road, a major arterial, is 42,000 trips per day. I understand the necessity to protect the neighborhood, but the notion that this is not compatible, the notion that 45 square feet inside a fully enclosed building with two musicians performing up until 10:00 p.m. during the weekdays and up till 11:00 on the weekends, leaves a lot to be desired. It is wholly and totally compatible. In addition, in response to the neighborhood's concern, which, this property is not a part of Gaining Ranch and we're not subject to Gaining Ranch, but we are neighbors. And we've engaged in neighborhood meetings and multitudinous conversations with the neighborhood to try to work out any differences that we can, and we've had. And I won't list the multitudinous concessions that we've made unless that's the mayor and council's desire, but I can say that even up until today, we've additionally agreed to install, and I can point it through, I can walk you through this, on the patio. And bear in mind, there is no live entertainment on the patio. There is no amplified music on the patio. There are no external speakers on the patio, but the patio is that part of the business which is within 250 feet of the residence. We've agreed to come in and install canopies, which will be basically covers, covers over the patio to further attenuate, attenuate noise. Regarding some of the other comments about Mandalay Bay in Las Vegas, I don't know if that's necessarily applicable here. I appreciate Jim Funk and the rest of the community working with us. I think this applicant has done everything that they can to be a good neighbor. I think the stipulation that requires them to renew this use permit in a year provides a lot of protection. And I also think that the applicant should enjoy similar protections. That being that if the applicant, if the owner rather, complies with all the provisions and conditions and stipulations of the use permit, and if the applicant is compliant with the city's codes and ordinance, need not be required to return. And regarding, and regarding property values, I mean, there's no need to address this. The property is Zone C2. Having two musicians on 45 square feet playing music for five hours a day in a fully enclosed building has no effect on property values. If the mayor of the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Goforth. Yes, we do. And I'm presuming that the council members are on the board of our questions. Have you? And in the case, I'll start with Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions that were brought up, just if you could point out, can you put up on the screen the actual site plan of the facility? I just want to know exactly where the outdoor speakers are and where the outdoor TVs are and where they, where they're located, where they point, how many?
There are no, there are no external speakers. And the TVs, my understanding is, are located here and here, basically proximate to, these are 10-foot fireplaces, so television one, television two, on the building face.
So there are no speakers outside on the patio?
There are no external speakers but for those speakers in the television. The TVs have speakers in them and the intent is to, if there's a ballgame on, the intent is to have the television broadcast that audio content.
Okay.
It's not amplified through a separate system.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCullough?
I think you answered the question that I have. You, you said that there are no external speakers, but the speakers in the televisions will be operational. Are you willing to stipulate that the speakers in the televisions would not be operational?
The, the problem that I have with that, Councilman McCullough, is the property's Zone C2. They're allowed to have televisions with speakers by right now.
I can't tell, was that a yes or a no?
Our preference is that not be a requirement.
I'll take that as a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Littlefield.
Well, you know, it cracks me up. We get complaints from people who move next to a nuisance, and then they have a problem with it, but in this case, we have the same thing we have in downtown Scottsdale, which is, the residents were there, and the nuisance moves next to them. And the obvious question I have here is the same question I ask about what's going on down in the entertainment district. Why do we need, with all the places we have in Scottsdale to put bars, why do we have to put it where it's going to drive the residents crazy? I just, there's no sense to that. Why do we do that? Here, we're going to put one right across the street, 250 feet from pre-existing neighbors, not somebody who moved next to a bar and started complaining about it, or a restaurant. It's people who were there, and it is moving next to them. And one of the speakers made a couple of interesting points. He said, "We have no confidence that the city will protect us," because they haven't protected the folks in the downtown entertainment district. Well, yeah, that's part of the problem. That's part of the problem with letting the entertainment district run them up. This isn't about bars. This isn't about whether or not bars should be allowed in Scottsdale. We have hundreds of liquor licenses in Scottsdale. The question is, why do we allow bars next to existing residents? That's the issue here. Why do we allow, why do we actually give somebody a permit to drive the residents crazy? Why does it have to be here? Why do we have to have an entertainment district? Why do we have to have the one up there? Now, we see what's happening in the entertainment district is starting to spread out to other places. One of the speakers said it. It looks like a trend. Made the point, what's this going to do to Scottsdale's brand? Right? If you can't come here and live peacefully, and we're going to allow people to build nuisances next to you, what does that say about the quality of life in Scottsdale? So, you know, arguing over the question of whether or not we're going to have this or that or the other stipulation, the bottom line is, it shouldn't be here, and so I'm going to be opposed to granting the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Councilman. I think there's a little matter, I suppose, of how things are zoned, and that's what that controlling factor is, and we add to that conditional use permits, and that's why we're talking about stipulations and issues.
And I apologize for interrupting, Mayor. One clarification I would make is this is not a use permit for a bar. It's a use permit for live entertainment.
Understand. My, well, I guess in just response to Councilman Littlefield's comments about how these things work, certainly, it's a matter of zoning. That's why we have zoning criteria and zoning areas, specifically subscribed with the kinds of uses that are allowed within a current zoning. But that being said, we are talking about the stipulations and a conditional use permit for a, and I'm also presuming that this is a Series 12.
That's correct, Mayor.
And therefore is subject already to audits from the liquor department with regard to the extent of food versus liquor that's served at the establishment.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
And in their previous applications for this type of establishment, the Downside Risk, had they been in compliance with it?
To the best of my knowledge, the original Downside Risk was in downtown. As I understand it, they don't have any, they had no violations. The Downside Risk North had no violations as well.
With regard to their status as a Series 12?
Correct. And in addition to that, at the time, those businesses were operational, a use permit for live entertainment, which, at this point, requires amplified music, external, have a use permit. At that time, it did not.
All right. If I were to just go down some of the things, certainly, we've seen multiple objections to having outdoor music, amplified music, or live entertainment outside. Now, if I understand that correctly, not only from your statements, but also from the stipulations as I see them here, that is specifically eliminated. It is live entertainment inside of a closed building, windows and doors shut.
That is correct.
Okay, so that amplified music, live or otherwise, is not outside on the patio?
That is correct.
And that's a strict stipulation that is within the CUP as we've got it?
That is correct.
All right. The other was, and we mentioned the TVs, in fact, as the speakers, and you mentioned something about something to mitigate the sound that might be generated on the patio. At this point in time, I'm wondering whether we're talking about people's voices as well as anything else. What is the noise we're trying to mitigate on the patio by putting the, that your, the property owners trying to put on the?
I think all noise.
So, okay, noise typically, unless you have amplified music, it would be people speaking. And there's one other issue, and that's the TV with any kind of sound coming from the TVs. As far as the time of operation, I understand it is, if there is to be live music during the week, it would be limited till 10:00 o'clock?
That is correct.
All right. Now, was that your original request?
Originally, they desired to have live entertainment during the full hours of operation, which was 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. daily.
Okay, so move that back during the week to 10:00, and then on weekends till 11:00?
That is correct.
One other area of interest, and I know for the property owner and applicant as well, is the one-year revisit. And what criteria would you suppose for, let me, in fact, let me ask, how, if we've got something, Mr. Washburn, how would a one-year revisit operate? How is it intent on, is it come back just automatically to the full process again? So in other words, this is really just a one-year CUP? Or is there some other criteria even to either allow it to continue forward or otherwise?
Well, the way the stipulation is written right now, essentially, the CUP expires in one year, so if the applicant wanted to have CUP after the end of that one year, the applicant would have to go through the same process that they've already gone through in order to obtain another CUP.
So what they're investing in with whatever they're investing in on this property would only be good for one year?
To the extent that it relied on the CUP, it would only, they would only be guaranteed that they would have the CUP for one year, and of course, even during that one year, it's always subject to the revocation procedures that are available.
So there's no stipulation as to whether there's any violation or any complaint or anything like that? It's just an automatic go-through the process again?
That's correct.
So if everything were golden, they would still have to go through it and do it each and every year? Is that what the intent is eventually?
No. Presumably, next time, they would apply for a CUP, and they would receive a CUP on the same terms as any other applicant, and that would, then they would retain that CUP and listen until it was revoked. Although, of course, the council could put in a stipulation in the next one that it's only good for another year or two.
I understand. Well, obviously, we're seriously concerned about what impact this would have on any neighbors as it relates to the center itself, as far as the residential community that surrounds it. But it does appear that there's been some significant concessions that have been made, and I think that's, it's an interesting test period. If we're looking for it to be a test period, then we probably ought to weigh it that way. I'll leave it at that for the moment. Vice Mayor Milhavin.
Thank you. I'm looking at the attachment to the ordinance, that's the legal document for the stipulations, and I see the one year. I see the doors closed. I do not see windows closed. Can you point me to where that is in here?
Correct, Mayor Lane and Vice Mayor Milhavin. The stipulations presented to you tonight were from the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So if the city council decided to add a stipulation, they would simply add a note to stipulation number eight, where it says external doors. You could say external doors and windows. All external doors and windows shall be closed during the live entertainment hours.
Okay, and that's agreeable.
So that would need to be added tonight if that were made as part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. And then, important that we do that. And then, it's my understanding that the TV speakers are by right, so whether or not we issue this conditional use permit, they have a right to have TVs outside and use the speakers on the TVs?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, if you add a stipulation regarding anything, it applies to the activity during live entertainment. This isn't a conditional use permit for a restaurant, so any stipulation that would apply would only apply to the issue at hand, which is live entertainment. So if you indicated that windows and doors be closed, it's pertaining to the live entertainment activity. If you added a stipulation that no TVs are on, that would be during the live entertainment activity. It doesn't extend beyond the live entertainment activity. For instance, if there were breakfast without live entertainment, lunch without live entertainment, dinner without live entertainment, you would, these stipulations don't apply to anything occurring on the property that, other than live entertainment.
Okay, so any stipulation around TVs, sounds like it would be no point. It would have no impact. Okay. And then, external speakers, it's the same, only as it relates to, nothing precludes them to have, from having other speakers, other than as it relates to live music. Is that right?
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay. And I have one other question. The zoning allows a restaurant in this location by right. The council didn't approve a restaurant. The zoning already allows that. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman McCullough.
Thanks, Mayor. In regard to a couple of comments that were made up here, bars aren't nuisances in and of themselves. We have lots of bars that are good neighbors, and for that matter, they don't make noise by themselves. It's amplified sound that's the problem. And Mr. Funk alluded to a problem that we've already experienced many times downtown, and it's in regard to the TVs. We can wait for a year if we have a conditional use permit that expires, but if we're looking for offenses from having TVs out there, we won't get them. And the reason we won't get them is because the televisions, even when they're turned up very loud so that they're clearly audible from the houses that are concerned about this, or the occupants of the houses, there will be ample noise or sound for them to hear this, but it still won't trigger the noise ordinance. So a year from now, the neighbors can be fully offended by the televisions that may run very loud, but there will never be a citation issued because they will never have triggered the noise ordinance. So if we're anticipating that the noise ordinance will cure a problem with the television sets, that's not going to happen. So as Vice Mayor Milhavin pointed out, if, even if, even if any limitations on the televisions only apply to the periods of time when there is live entertainment inside, I think it's still worthwhile, because if the televisions are on outside and there's live music going on inside, they will turn up the television sets so that they can be heard better outside, and the sound will inevitably carry to the neighbors. So even though there's a right to the televisions here, I would say that the stipulation that the televisions don't have sound on during the hours of live entertainment is a worthwhile stipulation in this. And I certainly would include the windows with the doors being closed for clarification. I thought that was already, I thought you had already agreed to that. In fact, I thought you had commented on it earlier when you were talking about it.
And yes.
So I would say that, I don't see a basis for denying this, but I do see a basis for stipulating that the televisions won't have audible sound, even if that audible sound issue is only for the period of time that we can govern it, which is when there's live entertainment going on inside or the live entertainment hours. So those, I guess those would be the conditions under which I would approve this, and it sounds to me like that's as strict as we can be.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Littlefield.
Well, you know, I think it's interesting that the Planning Commission, of all groups, put this year limitation on their approval of this. It's not exactly like those guys are a hotbed of anti-bar activists and, you know, neighborhood protectors. So the fact that the Planning Commission, of all people, felt concerned enough about this to put the one-year stipulation on ought to tell us up here that there's something wrong with this, and that it's a problem. And I would still vote for denying it. A minimum, we need to keep that one-year stipulation, and I think where Councilman McCullough just said, is, you know, the idea that, well, we're going to protect them from noise from live music, but TV's okay. You know, is suddenly like that's less annoying than the live music noise? I don't think so. Now, we can get in here and talk about the forest and trees issues of what's allowed and what's isn't, but the bottom line is, the whole reason we created the conditional use permit process for bars was because the liquor license process wasn't working. Back in 2003, this council was turning down liquor licenses, and then the liquor board would just say, "Ah, we don't care what you think," and they'd just stamp them. That's why we created the CUP process for bars in the first place, was to protect neighborhoods from the unpleasant effects of them. It's like Councilman McCullough said, bars alone are not necessarily a bad thing. It's when you put them next to residences that you have these problems. And you either have to not do that, or if you're going to put them there, you have to have very, very strict rules to make sure they don't become a blight or a negative impact on the residences.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Milhavin.
Thank you. Interesting, this is not a CUP for a bar. It's for live entertainment. They have a right to open this restaurant by right. That's not what we're being asked to do. Interesting, Councilman Littlefield, that you object to a one-year extension when you sit up here and say, "We've never revoked a conditional use permit, so if the neighbors are asking us for one year," I'm surprised that's not agreeable to you, since you say we don't, it's not effective anyway. So I think that the one-year responds to the neighbors. If they have doubts that this will be a good neighbor, let's take a year and see that they're going to be a good neighbor. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 9037, adding the additional stipulation that the windows must also be closed. And I just want to make one more comment. I am sensitive to the neighbors' concerns about televisions, but given the fact that as long as they don't have live music going, they can run the televisions anyway, I think that stipulation really isn't practical, doesn't accomplish anything. So for the matter of, I'm not going to include that in my motion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Motion's been made with the added stipulation to clarify for the windows. Is that understood?
Mayor, I-
Yes, Councilman McCullough?
If the motion maker would stipulate to the television issue, I would second the motion.
Vice Mayor, again, at this point, the use of the televisions, having the volume muted during the hours of live entertainment, we haven't contemplated that. In light of the restrictive nature of the one-year automatic expiration of the use permit, I don't know if that's necessary. I don't know if the mayor or the council are going to consider language relative to keeping this use permit active after one year. Having said that, I don't know if having the television volumes off during the hours of live entertainment do more than what all of these stipulations already accomplished.
All right, Tom, I won't, let's see how this one goes, and if it doesn't pass, we can come back to yours. Okay. Besides, I don't have a second yet, anyway.
Here's to, "I've died for lack of a second." If I were to just continue on a little bit with a couple of additional points, I suppose, there's two things that I see as significant issues. One of them is the volume of the TVs. And there's a number of establishments that I think, they're even in the same general area, that don't use the volume on their TVs. If they're a sports bar, it's enough is communicated with the visual image that they don't get into that. My concern would be is, and I realize it is not the point at hand, we're talking about a live music CUP for a live music application, but it does concern me when we talk about amplified sound, and particularly on that side of the building. So I'm, I'm in, I'd say I'm in the same position as the Councilman McCullough with regard to the TV music, or sound or music, or whatever might come out of that. And I'm wondering if there's not some way to accommodate when live music's not on, or a governor of half of its full volume being the maximum that could ever be at, even at that. But that's really getting down into the weeds a little bit. The other one that I'm concerned about is how this is viewed as a one-year CUP. I think that if we set criteria, if we set the criteria correctly, that we're willing to say that we're going to give it a try, we're going to obtain information that we don't have right now. And I think that if we obtain that information- And I think that if we obtain that information through the course of a year, and it's determined by, frankly, any standard of complaint that we might want to put on it, but at the very least, say that there needs to be a, some indication of a problem, otherwise, if there's an indication that it's working. So, I would, in any motion, would like to see some kind of definition of how we might go about reviewing this a year from now. And I don't know whether we have considered that, I've asked about it previously, if there is some program, because right now, it sounds like a wide-open deal, it's just a shutdown, and frankly, that goes to another matter. If it expires in a year, and there, too much time takes place to try to apply for another one, are they shut down in the interim? How clear are we on, on what the consequences are after it expires after a year? I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just sort of playing a little bit of devil's advocate, I suppose, as to how this might be facilitated, but I really would like to gain something from the exercise, not just go through the exercise. So, if in fact, there are stipulations and they abide by them, it'd be nice if we could have some kind of measurement that they did abide by them, and therefore, we're in a better position to continue than to go through the entire process again. Have, we considered anything along that, that line, Mr. Waschburn?
Mayor, the, the CUP process, well, one of the questions you asked is, well, you know, how clear are we what happens when the CUP expires if they've not received a new CUP? The simple truth is, is they no longer have a CUP, and then therefore, if they did live entertainment, there would be a code violation, and they would be subject to enforcement. With respect to some intermediate review status, the, the city ordinance provides, if you, if somebody's granted a CUP, and the CUP continues, if you don't have it automatically terminate at the end of one year, then if you're going to terminate the CUP, you have to go through a revocation process. It would be possible for the council to require that the matter be brought back before it in a year for review, and, and a report from staff on whether or not there's evidence of compliance, and then the council could determine at that time whether to begin a revocation process, but it would still have to go through the revocation process. There either is a CUP, or there isn't a CUP at the end of a year. You could have it automatically terminate, and then they'd have to get a new CUP, or you could have it not terminate, and you can do the revocation process, but you could have some review that leads you up to decide whether or not you want to do the revocation.
I sort of, I lost sight a little bit of the fact that this is not a shutdown of an operation, it's just the elimination of the live music issue, so it's not as traumatic as it might have sounded, as I expressed it. I think we, we have a situation here where there is the proper zoning, and we've got some stipulations that I think are responsive to the concerns of the neighborhood, and we now have a one-year period of time to evaluate it. If it, if it's a problem, even with the stipulations, either complying with the stipulations or not, I suppose it would be a challengeable event in a year's time. So, Councilman Littlefield?
Well, since my esteemed colleague, Vice Mayor Milhavan, saw fit to throw my name in this, I would just like to point out that, yeah, I do complain about the fact that in the nine years since we passed the ordinance requiring conditional use permits for bars, originally in downtown, and then for the rest of Scottsdale, we have not even considered revoking one, much less actually revoked one. And that's in light of the fact that there's plenty of evidence, that there are bars out there that clearly are not meeting their CUP requirements. So, I think people are right to be suspicious of our commitment to enforce the rules that we're creating here, and the bottom line is, if, if they don't believe that we're willing to enforce them, then why would they agree that the stipulations are fine? I mean, we could require that these people enclose the whole thing hermetically, and it wouldn't make any difference if we're not prepared to actually go out and enforce those rules. So, certainly, people are, are right to not trust that, but even so, to think about how we might, I mean, the fact that the, I was shocked that the Planning Commission actually put this stipulation on. I almost fell out of my chair when I saw that happen, and if even those guys are concerned about this, we ought to be concerned about it. But in the end, here's the bottom line, we should send the message, don't build bars next to residential neighborhoods. There's plenty of places in Scottsdale to build bars. You don't have to build them next to existing residences, and that's the bottom line, that's really what's wrong with this thing.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Robbins?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Waschburn, and this isn't a bar, it's a restaurant. Is, is, are we able to enforce a stipulation that says, turn the TV volume off? It seems a little bit like when the applicant comes forward to ask for live entertainment, and we say, hey, you need more parking, or, hey, you need more lighting, or, I mean, it doesn't seem like the TV volume relates directly to the live use permit that they're requesting, so I'm trying to find out whether that's an enforceable stipulation, or is that something we can even consider in this application?
You can enforce a stipulation relating to the TV sound, if in fact, it is also related to the live entertainment, the purpose of the CUP. So, for example, I, I think it probably would be enforceable if you had a stipulation that said during live entertainment, the TV sound has to be off, but it has, it does have to be related to the live entertainment, it can't be unrelated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I hate to see us in a position of not being able to consider this, because I, I think what it really gets right down to is a, an issue of zoning, and some right to the use of the property under the current zoning, as we define it. And this is, I'm sorry, was it C2?
Yes, Mayor.
And this application as a restaurant, even be with a Series 12, under the, under the requirements that are, the liquor department, with regard to food versus alcohol, does define it as a restaurant, and from all indications, they've operated just that way. Obviously, there'd be consequences if they didn't, their license. But I think that, and I am a bit concerned about the TV and, and the speakers that might be associated with that. I, I think there's something that you see all around now, even with TVs, there could easily be additional speakers associated with it, where we haven't mentioned whether that would be amplified, we're just saying that the speakers, only the speakers that are contained within the TV. But since you have the right to have TVs, and if we don't say something about that, I'm wondering how far that can actually go. Maybe I, I should ask staff, if that, if that, if some were to set up a sports restaurant bar, if you will, and were to have TVs, and they were to have surround sound installed with amplification, does that fall into the normal use of, of the property, under any circumstance? Mayor, I, I think that, that's a hypothetical question, but generally speaking, restaurants have that in a variety of locations throughout the city. Are you speaking of, if they were to add a bar? Well, under C2, they have, they're entitled to have TVs on the patio, as I understand it, and there's no restriction as to how, how much they amplify that.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, whether it's the speakers within the TV or otherwise, there's no, there's no limitation on that.
That's correct, yes.
So, if they had the music channel on, and they were just amplifying music, I mean, they, they would be capable of doing that.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so that, it does cause a concern. I mean, there's a lot of talk about trust and everything else, we, we certainly want to make sure that we're, we're looking at a situation that is responsive to the community around it, even though the zoning is correct. I would say that, I would be for this, if we could do something about making sure that that, the TV amplification were limited. And I mentioned before, now, I don't know if this is enforceable or not, and I guess, Mr. Waschburn, I'll, I'll wait and see as I, as I say this, but if we said doors and windows closed when live entertainment, and that at no time, the amplification, and strictly confined to the speakers within the TV, were governed at, at half of whatever its maximum could be, so that in no time, it would be louder than that. And whether that's associated or not, that is a consideration when we're talking about whether or not we want to get involved with live music, which is, it may have potential impact on a community. And the other item, I suppose, is, and I, I still feel strongly about this, I'd like to see some definition of how, what happens after one year, if everything goes perfectly. If everything is just as to the letter, and it works fine, do they still need to come back in, in full flight of a reapplication? That's, that's another, that's a secondary concern, I suppose, only because of what it says. When we're, when we're talking about CUPs to an industry, an investment of any sort, whether you agree or disagree with what the, what property owners are looking to do with their property, if they're within the zoning, they have certain rights within it, whether or not they are allowed to operate, or they're, again, it's only to the point of live music, but it'd be nice, if we're going to start using this one-year kind of proposal, that we had some kind of way to gauge it. I don't, I'm not prepared for a, a motion at the present time, and we do have some further conversations, so.
Mayor, I was going to make a suggestion regarding the expiration, the one-year time expiration, you know, the language that I propose would be, upon finding that the conditions and stipulations of the CUP have been satisfied during the one-year period, the city manager or its designee shall cause the CUP to remain in effect as provided for by the Scottsdale Revise Code Appendix B. Additionally, relative to televisions on the patio, the standard, set at half the standard volume, if that's the protection that it takes, it's not unreasonable. Again, this is a restaurant. This is not a sports bar, we're not in the entertainment district, you know, we can, you know, that's fine, I mean, we can agree to that, you know, you understand the position, we're, we're trying to-
I do understand, and, you know, you mentioned road noise, and you mentioned, I mentioned just conversation, and that, that's a factor, too, and if we had that combined with the TV noise, it'd probably be mitigated anyway, but if it's at half, I think it would be something that I think would be helpful to some of the concerns of the citizens in that regard.
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you. Anyway, I'll go ahead and move on. Councilwoman Clapp?
I would have likely seconded the motion the last time, too, if the television issue had been resolved, so I'd be, I would agree to having the TVs off during the time that live entertainment is allowed. If that's a part of any motion, I would be fine with that, or I can make a motion, because the rest of it, I think, was pretty self-explanatory, because I do think that the, the applicant has done a lot to work with the neighbors here, and to make concessions, because when I watched the Planning Commission meeting, I don't believe the windows issue was resolved at that time, so you've done that since then. So, I would make, I don't have the, I don't have the language in front of me for this. Let's see if I can find it, excuse me, went off my screen.
Here, Councilwoman.
You have the language?
Yeah. If you're tired about the, you're going to want to make some adjustments to it.
Yeah. Okay, so my, my motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 9037, approving a request by applicant for a conditional use permit for live entertainment in a 4,261 square-foot restaurant with CBD, planned community district, C2, PCD zoning, and finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met, with the stipulation added that windows as well as doors would be closed, and that the televisions are turned off during the time that live entertainment is permitted, and I believe the one-year requirement is already written into this, is that correct? Is that in the stipulations already?
Yes, that is, and just a point of clarification regarding the televisions, you mentioned off, is that the sound off, or the tire?
Oh, I'm sorry, sound. I didn't mean to say the televisions are off. The television sound is turned off during the time that live entertainment is permitted.
That sounds quite familiar.
Something like yours, right?
Did you make that motion?
I did.
I was going to acknowledge, actually, that it sounded exactly like what Councilman McCullough was, was suggesting, when he said he would have seconded it as well.
I'll, I'll second that, and, and I'll, I'd like to make one comment on it. The purpose of this is to protect the neighbors. The televisions are already entitled, so if we can dull the sound of the, of the televisions a little bit, I, I think that will help. The dilemma that we have, or what we have to be careful of up here, is that just because we've lived through this in the entertainment industry, we can't presume that everybody is guilty just by virtue of his interest or her interest in starting a bar and restaurant, and they're not all bad actors, we have lots of good ones. So, we're, we're, we're at risk for, for condemning everybody because of the bad actors downtown, and so I'm seconding this, and I'll support it, because I genuinely believe that this will help improve the situation that you have. So, it's, it's in that spirit that I, I second this and will support it.
Thank you, Councilman, and with that second, it looks like we have no further comments from the dais or questions. We're ready then to vote. All those in favor of the motion as it's been presented, please indicate by aye, and those opposed with a nay. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one, with Councilman Littlefield opposing. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Go forth. And thank you, staff, for the presentation as well. Okay, our next items, and we will take them individually, are, are, starting with item 29, which is the medical marijuana conditional use permit, 1UP 2012, and this is a request to adopt Resolution Number 9008, approving a conditional use permit for a 1,944 square-foot medical marijuana use with industrial park district zoning, and finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met. So, Mr. Bloomberg?
Mayor Lane, City Council Greg Bloomberg with current planning. The case before you, as mentioned, is 1UP 2012 for the MMRX Medical Marijuana Facility. Site is located on the south side of Greenway Hayden Loop, in a multi-tenant building. Scottsdale Road is to the west, and this is actually, I believe, now Scottsdale Quarter, or something of that nature. They will occupy one suite in this particular building. General plan, actually, the greater airpark character area plan identifies this as an employment district. This is the site plan of that location, and this is the floor plan they are proposing to utilize. Just a brief background of this request, this particular location was approved previously last year under Case 11, UP 2011, to operate a medical marijuana use. As a condition of the resolution, they were given a six-month timeframe to meet the conditions of that resolution. They were unable to do so because of delays at the state level, so the CUP has since expired, and at the Planning Commission hearing, they received a recommendation of approval by a vote of five to two. That concludes the presentation. I'll answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your records, Court Rich with the Rose Law Group, 6613 North Scottsdale Road. Thank you for, for your time here tonight. I'm happy to be here on behalf of this applicant, who I think, if you've looked at the application that was made, you'll find is, is the exact type of, of group that you would want operating these facilities in the city of Scottsdale. Mr. Ted Reesdorf is here with me, him and his father have teamed up with Dr. O'Raba, who is actually working right now as a doctor in an emergency room at Banner Healthcare. He is, his focus is on pain management, and this is really his passion, and so I think we've put together a great operating group. This will look familiar to you, as Greg mentioned, because this is the exact same application in the exact same location with the exact same people that was approved last year. We're back to you this year, just because of the circumstances of how the, the program has been implemented. Nothing has changed, and I want to stress that, nothing has changed since the last time you, you voted to approve this. I do want to point out one, one thing that I'm sure you're aware of, is a couple of weeks ago, you did approve an applicant for a use permit in the North Scottsdale area. The way that the state law is set out is that there will be, since you've approved one, there will be one medical marijuana dispensary in North Scottsdale, and a maximum of one. And so, I guess I would submit to even those of you that have been- And so I—I guess I would submit to even those of you that have been perhaps against medical marijuana dispensaries in the past, that what's going to happen next is those applicants that are approved—that get use permits from the city of Scottsdale are going to submit to the state, and the state is going to select the best of those applicants to be that one group that gets through in the city of Scottsdale. So I think it would be in your interest to have more competition there, to the extent that those people are the right kind of operators that are committed to doing this right in the right location. It makes sense to have this—give the state the option to pick from among more applicants and pick the most qualified applicant, so that the city of Scottsdale gets that one applicant that is the best. And now certainly, I encourage you to look at the merits of the application and then the location, and I think our—our application is—is a good one. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the subject, but I certainly encourage your support and look forward to hopefully the same result as last year on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. At the present time, we don't have any requests for public testimony on any—on this or any of the three that are involved here. And I've—also, no comments or questions I would think would arise. One clarification I would want to make for anyone who's listening to this is this is sort of a—a bit of a conundrum for a council—municipal council in making a decision on these kinds of things. We have certain obligations under our municipal and state laws, and we also have an obligation and frankly, a responsibility under federal laws. And in this particular case, there's a choice by the federal government not to—to enforce the federal laws that dictate on this area, but it's—it's almost indicated to be a momentary or a temporary situation. There's been a lot of talk in the papers with regard to what our responsibilities would be, as if we—if we were to violate and—and participate in the violation of federal law at a time when they decide that they do not want to enforce. And in some instances, they've noted the fact that they don't want to apply current resources to that effort. So that condition might change at some future date, which would open up—and it may be a—albeit, it may be a small risk, but nevertheless, a personal responsibility on the part of everyone in this dais. The other side of it, of course, is what our responsibility is under the state law and of course, of a—of an initiative that was passed by the public and put together by the state to follow through on. So it leaves us in a little bit of a—you know, certainly, I see it as a little bit of a difficult situation, but at the same time, that's what we're dealing with. I just want the public to know that when we vote on this—and frankly, there's—there's different sides to—certainly, the issue, but there is certain responsibility by a municipality to follow our state law. So that's—that's where we're at, and so the judgments made on any decision, one way or the other, are personal ones, certainly to some degree, but also in trying to be in compliant with our—our mission and our responsibilities on this dais. Councilman Littlefield.
Well, I didn't know we were going to get into this discussion, but the other—the most pertinent fact here is that the citizens' initiative, notwithstanding, use, distribution, cultivation of marijuana is a violation of federal law. That's it. And until that changes, this is illegal, and so I'll be voting against all of these.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCullough.
Well, fortunately, Councilman Littlefield isn't our attorney, and we'll wait and see what the courts say about that, but notwithstanding whatever conclusion they reach, all we're asked to do here is approve again a location, and so I'll make a motion to find that the conditional use permit criteria have been met and adopt Resolution 9008 approving a conditional use permit for 1,944-square-foot medical marijuana use located at 15455 North Greenway Hayden Loop Suite C22 with Industrial Park District I-1 zoning.
Have a second with the second like to speak toward it. All right. We do have a motion then and a second to approve—or to adopt Resolution 9008, as was indicated. No further comment being indicated. Those in favor, please indicate by aye. Those opposed with a—with a nay. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to two. It's Councilman Robbins and Councilman Littlefield opposing. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 30, which is to give Tree Wellness Center of Arizona, Inc., a conditional use permit for UP 12—2012, and request to adopt Resolution 9011 approving a conditional use permit for 3,000-square-foot medical marijuana use with industrial park district I-1 zoning and finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met. Yes, Mr. Bloomberg.
Mayor Lane, City Council Greg Bloomberg with current planning. As you mentioned, this is Case 4UP 2012 for Giving Tree Wellness Center of Arizona for a conditional use permit for medical marijuana use. Site is located east of the Scottsdale Airport in a suite in an existing multi-tenant building here between Evans Road and Kelting. This is Hayden Road over here to the east at the far end of the photo. Close-up of the suite that they will occupy in that site—in that area. General plan designates this location as an employment district. This is their floor plan, which is a little different than the floor plan that was approved with the previous use permit. It has expanded somewhat, but that's why they—again, this is a new use permit application, so they can—they can request an expansion as part of this request. As with the last request, this was previously approved under Case 26UP 2011 for medical marijuana use. CUP has since expired, and the planning commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of four to three. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also here. If you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. We do have one request to speak on the subject. Ryan Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Ryan Hurley. I'm with the Rose Law Group, 6613 North Scottsdale Road. I'll be very brief, but as I'm certain you're aware of at this point, our firm represents a number of medical marijuana applicants throughout the state, and as such, we have a vested interest in making sure that the highest standards are are met, both at the state level and at a municipal level, and certainly in the city of Scottsdale, that all applicants are held to the same standard. In that regard, the application you have in front of you, I'm—I'm afraid has a—what we believe is a fatal flaw in their application. If I could just get the Elmo on here. And really, what it comes down to is that before the planning commission hearing, the red—the customary and standard red notice sign of the planning commission hearing was not up in place. This is a picture five days before the DPZ hearing, and you can see the only sign is the neighborhood sign that was up there. So we have a concern that—that some people weren't properly notified of that, and we believe that is a fatal and deficient flaw, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley, for the information. Councilman McCullough.
Well, for the same reasons cited earlier, I'll move that find the conditional use permit criteria have been met and adopt Resolution Number 9011 approving a conditional use permit for 3,000 square feet—a 3,000-square-foot medical marijuana use at 7655 East Evans Road with the industrial park district I-1 zoning.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. With second, like to speak toward it. Okay. Been made—the motion's been made and seconded to accept. Councilman Littlefield.
Councilman McCullough's snarky comment about my profession aside, it does—it's still illegal. People in other states are being arrested for doing this. It's a crime. It's a federal crime, and we're taking a chance, and it's a good chance that if we approve this, we're going to get enmeshed in that, and it's a bad idea.
Thank you, Councilman. I know further comments or questions that appears. We're ready now to vote on this issue. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to two with Councilman Robbins and Councilman Littlefield opposing. Moves us on to the next item, which is item 31, and it is the Valley Wellness Center Medical Marijuana Conditional Use Permit, 5UP 2012, and a request here is to adopt Resolution 9012 approving a conditional use permit for 5,040-square-foot medical marijuana use with industrial park district I-1 zoning and finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met. Mr. Bloomberg.
Thank you, Mayor Lane. City Council, as you mentioned, this is Case 5UP 2012 for the Valley Wellness Center for medical marijuana use in the airpark area. Site is located west of Hayden Road, which is here. This is the Scottsdale Airport. It's in an industrial area. The applicant will actually occupy, I believe—and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong here—I think it's about the south—southern third of the building. So right about in this area here. Sorry, that's not denoted on this aerial. General plan identifies this as an employment area. This is the site plan. Rather hard to read, but there is parking at this around here. This is their location here in that building. This is their floor plan. And it's with—the with—the—as with the previous two applications, this was also previously approved as organic medical under Cases 17UP 2011 and 18UP 2011. Both have since expired, and the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of four to three. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. We have one card and request to speak on this. Adam Ball.
Thank you, Adam Ball, with the Morris, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. I don't know if Mr. Hurley wanted to—okay. This case came before you last year, was approved by this council. It's come back again with planning commission recommendation, staff recommendation, a letter of support from the neighborhood, and it certainly meets all the requirements of your zoning ordinance, and I request your approval of this matter before you today.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Seeing no comment on this, I'll go to Councilman McCullough.
For—for the reasons cited on the two preceding cases, I'll make a motion to find the conditional use permit criteria have been met. You've already read this, haven't you, Mayor?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Okay. No comment?
I'd better say something. Let's see. I—along the lines of what Councilman McCullough was saying, just to be clear, everyone in the audience, it's not—we're not approving on a state level or or interfering at all with—with the—the challenges that are going on. This is clearly a zoning issue, and this is not addressing the overall topic of if, you know, marijuana should be sold in these wellness centers. So that's not—that's not our—our thing to decide here. So with that, that's my second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Littlefield.
You know, I just—if we're—if, as some folks up here are suggesting, we're required to vote a certain way, why do we even hold the vote? We just mail it in, all right? We're still taking a vote. We're still required to vote what we think is right and vote our consciences. And I didn't realize this was going to turn into this kind of discussion, but I'm sorry, it's wrong. It's a violation of law, and it's wrong. And there's no rule that says we have to vote a certain way. But I would like to know, Councilman McCullough, when I come visit you in the federal prison, what kind of cake do you want me to put the file in? I know you like angel food. Will that work?
Thank you, Councilman.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, no further comment or questions appear on this item 31, and the motion's been made and seconded. Ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye, and those opposed with a nay. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to two with Councilman Robbins and Councilman Littlefield opposing. Okay, that completes item 31. That moves us on to the next item on our regular agenda, and that is the Portalis Residential Rezoning at 76 CN 1985, Number 6, and a request here is to adopt Resolution Number 9040 declaring Portalis Residential Development Plan, including the development standards as a public record, and two to adapt ordinance Number 4013 approving to modify the original zoning stipulations and amended development standards, Case Number 76 CN 19—1985, Number 3, and a new development plan for the 39 multifamily residential units on a 9.6-acre vacant portion of a 40-acre planned block development family. I'll leave it at that for now.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I—I have an announcement. I'll be recusing myself from this vote. The applicant—I recently moved my firm to—I merged with a firm, larger firm, Davis Miles, and the applicant is a client of that firm. So for those reasons—for that reason, I should say, I—I'm required to recuse myself. So I'll be leaving.
Okay. Thank you very much for the notice. Thank you. So noted for the file, for the record, that Councilwoman Barowski has recused herself from item 32, Portalis Residential Rezoning. If—Kim, if you'd like to go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and members of the council. Tonight, we're going to consider the Portalis Residential Project, and it is located in our downtown area at the southwest corner of Scottsdale and Chaparral Road. It is located within a 40-acre Portalis planned block development, and the portion that you'll be considering tonight is just the residential project, and that lies west of Portalis Place between Goldwater and Chaparral. Here's a close-up of it, and you can see that the vacant area is the area in question tonight. Next door to that, to the east, is the 65-foot-high Portalis Corporate Center. South of that, we've got the 65-foot Optima Camelview mixed-use residential development. And over to the west, we've got single-story, single-family homes, as well as up to the north is here. Now, the—the zoning designation is not proposed to be changed this evening, merely the site plan and the stipulations, which include amended standards. So the entitlements process in this case is that to first go to the DRB to get review of your proposed amended development standards. They did that. DRB recommended favorably. Then it was on to the planning commission, where they review the amended standards as well as the site plan, and—and they make the findings with—if it's consistent with the PBD criteria and consistent with the general plan. They did that. Then the next step is tonight's hearing with the council. If the council approves it, their next step in the process would be to go to the Development Review Board with their building elevations and landscape plans on the more finer details. So here's the site in blue. It's bounded by Chaparral here on the north, Portalis Place on the east. Goldwater's down here on the south, and we've got the single families neighbor here over here to the west. The proposed vehicular access, the main one, is off of Goldwater here. There's a circular drive you would come into, and you could go down into subterranean parking, and they also are proposing to have at-grade parking. And several of the units are carriage houses, where they would have garages parked underneath those units. The proposed secondary access point is up here off of Chaparral, and the way that is proposed here, it is designed to discourage left turns out to go westbound on Chaparral. It allows right-in, right-out as well, as allows access from the commercial office here to come through. And there's a third access point right down here off of Portalis Place, and that would take the driver down into the subterranean garage. You can see here, this proposal is comprised of nine buildings, different stories, and it's separated by open spaces. Sidewalks will have internal sidewalks of six feet wide on Chaparral here, as well as Portalis Place. And due to the existing topography on the bridge over at Goldwater, there is no pedestrian access from Portalis Place to get up to there because of that grade change. But at this west—and west of this entry here, there is pedestrian access, and it's a sidewalk, and also there'd be a transit stop within the circular drive here. They are proposing some amendments to development standards, and this is a diagram showing the proposed heights. The highest height is—is 50 feet here off of Goldwater, and here's a 50-foot element here. So that's the only five-story. Then it steps back, steps down, actually. By the time you get over here to the single-family, single-story, it's down to the—the two-level carriage houses. Here are the elevations. They're featuring a contemporary design that's consistent with the Portalis master plan and incorporates a strong horizontal theme. Steel canopies that mimic the steel decks over at the Optima Camelview, and sandstones in shades that complement the Portalis Corporate Center. Here's another view. And this little table was put together to show you— And this little table was put together to show you what the standard zoning and development standards are for the downtown RCO2 PBD district. This middle column here shows you what is approved currently, the last development, and it shows the heights here, how many dwellings per acre, the floor area ratio, the open space and the setbacks. And here's what we have proposed this evening, so you can compare the differences. You will see in your staff report that we have been able to make a finding that this is consistent with our downtown character area plan, and particularly our environmental vitality, I'm sorry, our economic vitality section speaks to how development should promote downtown as a creative environment where people can live, work, and pursue leisure activities, as well as to encourage new development and reinvestment that maintains our downtown's economic edge in the region. And we are, in the staff report, you also see that it's consistent with the planned block development criteria. The D.R.B., as I mentioned earlier, did review this and is recommending approval of the amended development standards, and the Planning Commission is also recommending approval of the amended development standards, as well as the amendments to the zoning stipulations. And that concludes my report, and I believe the applicant's representative would like to address you as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fine. Very good. Thank you, Kim. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, members of the council, for your record, John Berry, the law firm of Berry and Demore, sixty-seven, fifties, Camelback Road in Scottsdale. With me this evening is my client, Kevin Ransell, and if that name is a little bit familiar, it's because he used to be with Mark Taylor Luxury Multifamily Builders for a number of years. He's also a resident of Scottsdale, and he has the dubious distinction of being not only an architect, which is not dubious, but being a lawyer, which is clearly dubious. So he actually wears both hats, which sometimes leads to a schizophrenic client. Mayor, members of the council, this case tonight is not a rezoning. This case tonight is not a request for additional height utilizing the infill incentive district. You're going to hear a lot about what this case is from folks who are opposed, but let me give you the facts. The facts are that an apartment use is allowed today on this site as it is currently zoned. There is more building square footage than we are requesting that is allowed today on this site. There is more density than we are requesting allowed today on this site, and there is less open space required on this site than we are requesting today. So if you had them, the cartoon bubbles above your head may be saying to yourselves, well then why in the world are we here tonight if the current zoning allows more height, more density, more square footage of building, and less open space? Why are you putting all of us through this, other than the fact I'm trying to put my kids through college? But that's a different discussion. The reason we're here is we need your approval for a revised site plan and stipulations that responds to changes in our economy since the last approval seven years ago and twelve years ago. Since the last site plan approval seven years ago, we have suffered through the Great Recession, and it has fundamentally altered the market for homeownership in a way that we haven't seen since our grandparents went through the Great Depression. Those fundamental changes in our markets related to homeownership have been reflected in lots of literature. Let me just give you some recent ones. This is from the Wall Street Journal back in October, and it says, "The rate of homeownership in the U.S. fell in the last decade by the largest amount since the Great Depression. People's perceptions of likely future home prices have been altered in a negative fashion," said this particular economist. "The number of people renting is expected to increase." A second recent analysis by the highly-regarded CoStar Real Estate Group, this is their analysis in a report entitled "The Coming Rental Housing Wave," and they say, "Powerful demographic trends, along with changing attitudes about homeownership and tighter mortgage underwriting, continue to drive a shift toward renting, which is fueling a ramp-up in new construction," noted this particular expert. Part of the shift is the market demand for smaller living spaces, even if you can afford more. Even today, if you can afford a ten-thousand-square-foot house, most people are building something substantially less. Before the Great Recession, people would stretch financially in order to have the largest amount of living space possible, whether they were owning or renting. That is not true now. Even those that can afford more living space, more square footage, are happier with less. That is why we are here this evening, requesting more units in buildings that are smaller than the previously approved case seven years ago when the economy was in hyper-expansion. Previously, the units that were approved with this prior site plan were an average of twenty-eight-hundred square feet. The units today are an average of nine-hundred-and-twelve square feet, reflecting that fundamental change in the demographics and the desires in the market for living space. This request is a sixty-five-million-dollar investment in our downtown. It has financing in place. My client owns the property. This is not a case contingent on a successful rezoning. They own the property. It will bring new, older residents to downtown with an average income of a hundred thousand dollars a year and forty million dollars in purchasing power to have spent in our downtown. Interestingly, that same analysis by CoStar at the end of last year noted that the total number of middle-aged households in the U.S., thirty-five to sixty-four years old, I assume that only Councilman Littlefield qualifies in that, in that band range, outnumber households under thirty-five years old by three to one. In turn, twenty million, or half the total number of renter households in the U.S. can be found in this middle-aged demographic. It's not the drunken ASU college student that's going to be renting these places. It is this type of demographic that will be here. Well, some say apartments are bad. Really? Let's ask Westcor. Let's ask the gallery owner. Let's ask the small business owner, the restaurant owner, and the people that work there. Can they really tell the difference when that person takes out their credit card or puts cash down at the cash register? Can they tell the difference between an empty nester, baby boomer, who owns their home or lives in a luxury apartment and wants that lifestyle so they can lock and leave their unit and not have the hassles of owning a home? This is how that empty nester would live and the kind of multifamily we're talking about at this location. This is hardwood floors, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, the same types of finishes that you would find in for-sale condos in downtown Scottsdale. Importantly for the city, as you're going through your budget deliberations, if this project is approved by January, and this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, there is an immediate and direct financial impact to the city's treasury of just under three million dollars when you factor in all of the permits and fees that are payable to the city. Now, what about our site plan? The site plan request, remember, this isn't a rezoning. It's a request to change the site plan. Our site plan request is for ten percent less building mass and square footage on this site than is already approved today. What about density? In two thousand and five, the approved plan, as staff noted, was thirteen units to the acre. Thirteen units to the acre. That's because they were so large in average size. In this instance, it was a reflection of the hyperextended economy with very large units. Instead of thirteen units to the acre, we are requesting thirty-eight units to the acre. Oh, my gosh, that sounds like a three-hundred percent increase in density on this site. That can't happen. Think of the impacts. Mayor, members of the council, in fact, that thirty-eight units to the acre is less than what's already approved on the site. The last person who came through simply opted to put larger units in larger buildings. We're putting smaller units in a smaller building. And you know what? We have the right to go to fifty units to the acre, not thirty-eight. Fifty, five-oh, units to the acre, just like Optima Camelview right across the street. That is our entitled right today. Well, what about heights? The offices immediately next door are sixty-five feet in height. The Optima residential across the street is sixty-five feet, excuse me, sixty-five feet in height. What are we proposing? We're proposing two-story, twenty-six feet in height. We're proposing thirty-eight feet in height. Our maximum height is fifty, fifty feet in height, and not sixty-five, fifty. And that fifty-foot height only applies to thirteen units on the entire site. Thirteen units on the entire site actually go to fifty feet in height. The rest are twenty-six feet or thirty-eight feet in height. All of this with forty, four-oh, forty percent open space. The requirement in downtown, zero. We're at forty percent open sp, open space. Besides the site plan, one of the major issues that you've heard about, and you'll hear about tonight, is traffic, particularly traffic on Chaparral. Well, traffic on Chaparral in particular has been an issue for twenty-seven years. This site, this forty-acre site, of which were nine acres, this forty-acre site was rezoned twenty-seven years ago. And it would be interesting if we asked people who come up and speak to ask whether they've lived in the neighborhood twenty-seven years or longer, or whether they've been there less than twenty-seven years. But I want you to know, twenty-seven years ago, I did not rezone this site. This was not my, my fault. The good news is, is that over the last twenty-seven years, the mix of uses on this entire forty-acre site has changed. And why is that good news? The good news is, we got a project like Optima Camelview, one of the most celebrated projects in, in the country. And I wish we could recreate every one of the Optima projects in our community, but unfortunately for us, there's only one Hovey in our community. The good news is, is that Optima project replaced planned eight-hundred-thousand square feet of office and retail. So instead of eight-hundred-thousand square feet of office and retail, all the traffic it generates, and a two-hundred-and-seventy-two-room hotel, we got six-hundred-and-fifty units at the Optima Camelview project. That has had a major impact on the traffic impacts in this area because we planned the street system and the network for much more traffic than has actually been built out. For example, since the time this project was last seen in two thousand, the estimated traffic on the entire forty acres has gone down by almost fifty percent, a fifty percent reduction in traffic planned. In two thousand and seven, after two years of working with the neighbors and staff, the Development Review Board approved a traffic calming plan to slow traffic down. This is the actual PowerPoint slide from the two thousand and seven D.R.B. What did that plan include for traffic calming on Chap, on Chaparral? It included narrowing the street. It included adding sidewalks. It included generous landscaping, and it included speed tables to slow traffic down. Well, how come this wasn't put in place? How come it wasn't built? This was approved five years ago. Well, what happened? The Great Recession happened. There was no money to do this. Well, we now have the opportunity to put in place a substantial portion of that plan that the neighbors worked two years on and that the D.R.B. approved, and we have the chance to put a significant portion of this, to put it in construction by the end, to begin construction by the end of this year, as we work with the city. If this plan is approved tonight, this amendment to the site plan is approved by you, by year end, we would hope to be under construction with substantial improvements along Chaparral, again harkening back to two thousand and seven. Here is our property right here. Here is Scottsdale Road. This is Chaparral, and actually, for a distance exceeding our property line, we will be helping to put in place and improve those traffic calming improvements called for by the two thousand and seven plan. We will also be working with the city to put in place a dedicated right-hand turn lane on Chaparral onto Scottsdale Road, which also gets you onto the couplet. That does not exist today, and it causes traffic to back up significantly at that location. So what would these improvements start and be completed in terms of improvements to Chaparral Road? We would narrow the street. We would add sidewalks. We would include substantial landscaping and speed tables, with the result of slowing traffic down and motivating drivers to use the couplet or Scottsdale Road instead of Chaparral Road. Mayor, members of the council, in conclusion, for twenty-seven years, this forty-acre project has been a work in progress. This is the last piece of that forty-acre master plan, and today and for years, it has been a dusty hole in the ground that's been a nuisance to folks. Let's replace that hole in the ground with a shovel-ready, sixty-five-million-dollar project that brings high-income residents to support our downtown businesses. Let's replace that hole in the ground with more open space, less height, less square footage, and less density than current zoning allows today. We have done more than our fair share to solve the twenty-seven-year-old Chaparral Road traffic problems that we didn't create. We didn't put in the freeway. We didn't put the access ramps on the freeway. We have certainly done more than our fair share. We would respectfully request that you follow the advice of your Development Review Board and the Planning Commission, both of which unanimously recommended to you that you approve this case, and we would respectfully request your approval this evening. I'm happy to answer questions or wait until after the extensive public comment, whatever the pleasure of the mayor and council is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. We will go to public comment first, and we've an opportunity to respond if necessary. Start with Linda Bish, followed by Bahavi Shaw. Linda Bish?
I'm Linda Bish, and I live at seventy-one thirty-one East Rancho Vista Road in Scottsdale. As addressed in my husband's and my more detailed letter to the mayor and city council dated today, I summarize with the following. The Portalees complex will present itself along Goldwater Boulevard, the most publicly visible side of the development, as a massive vertical structure like a huge cruise ship with small cabins more directly on the curb, dramatically unlike the Portalees offices in Optima that has setbacks. The aforementioned placement of this giant building along Goldwater will be unrelenting with additional road noise and safety concerns, not to mention lack of green setback aesthetics that would enhance our community. It would seem that the city has thus far in this process been blatantly pro-developer with little regard for the concerns of existing neighbors and citizens of Scottsdale who put faith in the city leadership for maintenance of our property values and careful growth with regard to development, as opposed to developers who are looking to maximize their profit at the expense of appropriate planning. The city will be poor for this disregard. That's our belief. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bish.
Dear Mayor and council members, my name is Bahavi Shaw, and I live at forty-seven twenty-nine North Seventieth Street, married and have two children under three years old. We live at the property that's going to be immediately behind this proposed circle drive, as well as the two-story apartment complex that will be in our backyard. Before I address my concerns with this project, I want Before I address my concerns with this project, I want to move to reconsider the legal challenge that I've submitted to the City of Scottsdale regarding their calculations of the legal protest that was submitted by the neighbors at Camelview Park Estates as well as Paradise Meadows. As I've submitted to the City of Scottsdale, the withdrawals that were submitted by the developer on Monday after the filing deadline of noon on Friday was in violation of the Supreme Court's decision in Moser v. City of Phoenix and in violation of the City Ordinance one point seven oh six, which requires that all legal protests and withdrawals be submitted before noon on Friday before the hearing. Legally, this, this decision must be submitted to a supermajority, not a simple majority, and I have not heard back from the City of Scottsdale regarding their position in response to the challenge that I have submitted. I moved to Arizona twelve years ago to practice law in, in central Phoenix, the law firm of Snell and Wilmer, where Mr. Berry also had practiced. I chose to live in the City of Scottsdale because it was known to be the most livable city. However, the proposed project that's being submitted here from a Texas developer, not an Arizona developer, will make this city unlivable for any family who wants to live near Old Town Scottsdale, particularly anyone with young, impressionable children. As a mother, the two-story apartment complex in my backyard is appalling as it will be rented to a number of young transient, young individuals who only care about barhopping in Old Town Scottsdale, and I'm concerned about the impression that it'll leave on my children. This is not going to bring the long-term economic stimulus that this developer is proposing that it will bring. The Circle Drive that's proposed to be immediately behind our backyard will bring hundreds of vehicles to travel through there, bringing substantial disturbance to the property owners right behind the development. This will occur twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, unlike a business office complex where there may be nuisances only during business hours. We purchased our home in two thousand and eight when the prior development had been approved by this council. We didn't have any problems with the development as proposed because those were single-story, multimillion-dollar owner-occupied villas that were being proposed there that would increase the property values of the neighboring, um, the neighbors in the surrounding area. This proposed project of apartment complex will diminish property values for all the neighboring residents. While I appreciate the council's desire to have this abandoned lot developed, this is not the right project to put in there. Shouldn't be apartment complexes. The council has already approved a lot of high-density apartment and condo developments in Old Town, including the seven-hundred apartment development of Blue Sky just right across the road. There is going to be a surplus of rental inventory, forcing these purported luxury carriage houses, as they say, to be managed to the ground like every other Mark Taylor property in the, in the valley.
Excuse me, Ms. Shaw. If you're out of time, if you could wrap it up, please.
Sure. The most significant difference between this project and those that have been approved are there, there are three neighboring neighborhoods that have the historical charm of the nineteen-fifties, and it will be lost by this development. There are other developers who, who are willing to develop on this premium parcel of land. So I urge this council to please protect the neighborhoods and the residents of the City of Scottsdale from this apartment development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Next would be Roxanne Gallagher, followed by Guy Phillips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Roxanne Gallagher. I reside at six-nine-two-four East Pasadena Avenue in Paradise Valley. I live immediately to the north of this project. I'm also a property owner in Scottsdale, and for many years I had the pleasure of serving as your bond counsel for many important development projects around the city. I also did work with Bobby at Snell and Wilmer and with Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry is quite eloquent, and I wish we could have him on our side. Unfortunately, we can't afford him. So who we do have on our side is you guys. And you guys are, um, we're counting on you to look out for our interests as property owners in the area. I would like to thank a couple council members specifically for acknowledging my extensive comments that I've made, both through correspondence and, um, in verbal comments in the Planning Commission, Councilman Littlefield, Councilman Robbins, and Councilwoman Clapp. Thank you very much. Your responsiveness is sincerely appreciated. Um, I, I do want to mention briefly the case that Ms. Shaw touched on, that, that case basically says, and the City of Scottsdale is not free to ignore case law when their law is not, um, specific on an issue, but it says, if there is a protest, if a protest is, is filed, withdrawals of that protest must be made in the same period of time in order to inform council members regarding their obligations under the law. Because the withdrawals were not submitted within that protest period, those, those protests should be invalid. You are risking a Superior Court filing, and you're also looking at the potential of having a court decide that it's, it's, have them choose the fairness of deciding whether or not it's okay to allow withdrawals after the protest date, but not to allow other people to join. And I doubt you'd find very many sympathetic court members that would, or judges that would find that, um, that fair. Uh, on to other issues. Again, Mr. Berry spoke very eloquently about this project, and there are a number of concerns that have not yet been addressed and cannot be addressed. Number one, the traffic issue on Chaparral is real, it's sincere, and what none of the correspondence so far has, or comments so far has pointed out, that the, the plan that you're looking at today does not include any traffic mitigation mechanisms that were suggested by the city staff. The Planning Commission completely ignored those and is, is allowing the developer to ignore the old stipulations in order to accommodate the Texas developer. This is not a context-appropriate project. This is a, a large rental project with nine hundred square-foot units that you're putting in a, in a neighborhood that is bounded by two sides on single-family homes. It's not context-appropriate. I understand that you have a very difficult time managing competing interests here, but your vision statement says that in the absence of competing considerations, neighborhood preservation and enhancement should be, take precedence. And that's what we're asking for in this case.
Excuse me, Ms. Gallagher. The time is up. If you would, please wrap it up.
Thank you. I can't help but notice that you have a bond, a general election for a bonding capacity coming up. You have the general plan that needs to be revoked, and you need voters to give you back your jobs. If you say no to your voters when they come to you, they are likely to say no when you come to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Guy Phillips, be followed by, I think it's, I believe it's Wayne Gillis.
Mayor, members, council, Guy Phillips, seven-one-three-one, East Choice Street, twenty-year resident. Three hundred and sixty-nine units, three times the existing zoning. Of course, planning passes it, and then Mr. Berry points out how you let even higher and denser buildings like Blue Sky get approved. They also point out that to the east is a sixty-five-foot building, and to the southeast there's sixty-five-foot condos. Well, we oppose those also, but the council approved them anyway. Is that a justification to approve more? What's also funny is that a comment that is consistent and conforms with the DRB and the general plan, what big rezoning project hasn't conformed? You see where this is heading. Once you allow one rezoning, you start the snowball effect of continuing height and density across downtown and eventually all of Scottsdale. And the notion that people would rather rent than own, that's ludicrous. Housing is down because people lost their homes. They will rent only until they can again for, afford a new home. They're not renting because they want to. To believe otherwise is to conform with Agenda Twenty-One. Common sense tells anyone here that three hundred and sixty-nine units, about eight hundred more residents, and about seven hundred more vehicles in this area is a recipe for disaster downtown. And please don't bring up multi modes of transportation. Everybody owns a car, especially in Scottsdale. No one wants to wait in a hundred-and-ten-degree sun for a bus or to walk a mile to work. Last week, the Republic printed an article praising Councilman McCullough for asking the tough question pertaining to public safety. "How much is too much?" he asked. Well, I'm asking the council right now, how much height and density is too much? Have you gotten together in a study session and decided how many should live downtown? How much traffic downtown can handle? How much water and sewer downtown, sewer downtown can handle? How many people can be crowded before the quality of life keeps visitors from coming here? That's the tough question that really needs to be answered before Scottsdale dries up and blows away in our dust of time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next would be Wayne Gillis. Followed by Frederick Detman.
Before speaking, adjust the microphone. Okay. Got it. Good evening. I'm Wayne Gillis. I was one of the first residents to buy into the Optima Camelview Village approximately five years ago. Optima, um, as far as I can determine, is nearly double the height and the majority, than the majority of this project. With over seven hundred condos, I would assume that Optima is still going to create double the traffic. Camelview Village is far dense, denser than this project. From what I have heard and seen about the new Portalese project and the earlier Rainy Rings, I think that they look, quite frankly, pretty cool, and I think that they're going to add, um, even more urban style and chic to the area. Truth be told, when it comes to high-density, density living, whether your unit is an apartment or a, or a condo, I find that ultimately it really doesn't matter. It doesn't really make much of a difference to me. We have a ton of renters at Camelview Village. And if they were ever to get out of control, it's extremely difficult to track them down, especially if their unit is owned by an individual owner. And some of those ownerships are nowadays held in trusts or LLCs or corporations, which is pretty common. At least with an apartment community, the, you can turn to the management team and immediately require them to crack down on whatever is going wrong, which is not the case with condos as I've experienced in Camelview Village. I must say also that I'm somewhat amused to hear that some of my Optima neighbors complain about noise, traffic, how close the buildings are, et cetera. I look outside my window and I can watch my neighbor's TV. In fact, if I had a universal remote, I could change his channels. Quite frankly, I don't because he's got HBO. I literally have twenty to thirty neighbors who live outside my balcony that are thirty to forty feet away. And yes, there is some noise, but most of us who live at Optima have embraced urban living and the downtown high-density living experience. Quite frankly, if you want a quiet environment with nobody around you, you shouldn't be living in this area. You should be living out in the suburbs or in an area that allows that. In my opinion, this project will bolster the downtown living experience by supporting restaurants, including the ones at Optima, as well as retail businesses that make downtown Scottsdale so special. I have a petition here of residents who support the project. Show, I can give this to you on my way back.
Mr. Gillis, should you give that to the clerk, and she can get it to us?
Oh, okay, cool. I'll see you later. It's a petition with thirty, thirty-six signatures, including six individual letters of support. I also saw a note recently in our mayor room, which quite really offended me because it opposed the project, it wasn't signed by anybody, or, or had no credit. I urge you, in closing, to support this project. We should really not be, in my opinion, discouraging developers who want to improve our neighborhood and in doing so will also be contributing a great deal in additional revenue to the city, not only in the form of property taxes, but also in substantial amounts of revenue which comes with being additional residents spending money in the local neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. The next would be Frederick Detman, followed by Chris Lehman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council people. I'm Frederick Detman, D-E-T-T, M-A-N-N. I live at four-eight-zero-one North Sixtieth Street, Scottsdale, Arizona. You know, Sixtieth Street, that's an alias for Scottsdale Speedway. We see the cars traveling back and forth on that, uh, street very quickly, and then they turn east onto Chaparral in the morning and reverse in the evening. I have three problems that I'd like to kind of elaborate. Basically, they have already been touched upon. Density, the size of the units, and the, uh, traffic problems. The size of the units bother me at nine hundred and twenty square feet as an average, and I realize that that's only an average, but that means that they're smaller units. Nine hundred and twenty square feet is like a nice suites hotel, obviously an upgraded sort of unit. And that bothers me that if, as the economy turns around, as, and these units might be more difficult to, to rent, are we going to see them, uh, open to short stays for a spring training or something else or whatever? And I don't know that there's any way to guard against that. But when someone tells me that, uh, folks earning a hundred thousand dollars are interested in moving into a nine hundred and twenty-square-foot unit for an extended period of time, we've done it, and I, I just can't believe that that would be a logical explanation. The density, the three hundred-plus units, obviously bothers me. We have more than one car at our place, and I'm sure that the folks that are going to be moving into this unit are going to have more than one car. So you're looking at perhaps six, seven hundred vehicles. I, I participated in that city exercise about the, uh, traffic on, on Chaparral some years ago, and we saw this beautiful avocado, which was going to deter all the traffic to the east out of the Fenova Building. And this evening, as we drove over here, we paused a little bit, watching the traffic come out of the avocado, I mean, out of the, uh, Fenova Building. And I'd say that at least twenty percent of those cars headed west. And I don't know if there's a possibility, or any possibility, that they could keep the traffic out of the, uh, western venue, excuse me, coming out of that exit on Chaparral. So my three problems are the density, the size, and what might happen to them when the economy improves, which I hope is going to be very shortly after the next election, and the, and the traffic problems on Chaparral. I think that some significant effort has to be made there, and I know that the city engineer's been working on it, but I would wish that that plan would have been released. The last time I saw, he said it was ninety percent complete.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Detman. Next is Chris Lehman, followed by Patty Badenoch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chris Lehman. I live at forty-seven oh-nine North Seventieth Street. I live on the, the western edge of the proposed project. I have many concerns, but a few in particular I'd like to address for you tonight. The first is the traffic congestion in the area. In less than a mile and a half, half a mile, excuse me, from the project and on my property, there are over twenty-one hundred new or proposed rental units. And there will be at least that many amount of cars around, around this area and around Fashion Square. That's a lot of cars coming in and out around with the Fashion Square traffic. I was reading the other day in the Arizona Republic concerning the busy intersection of Scottsdale Road and Camelback. The city's traffic engineer, Paul Purcell, was asked if the intersection could handle all the traffic. He stated, and he quote, quotes, "We feel that the additional traffic that would be generated by residential will fill in some of the gaps that are currently available in the traffic stream throughout the day." There are no facts to support this statement. I think actually it would be the opposite. More people go to work in the morning and come home in the evening. It's not a throughout-the-day type of thing, except on the weekends. He also states, quote, "That's not to say that there won't be some traffic increases and, increase in congestion, but we do feel that the level of service will, that the level of service won't degrade to the point where it becomes a problem." I believe the service will degrade, and it will be a problem. My job takes me around the country, and I'm in very high-dense east coast cities, and that's all I see is traffic, 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 and it's a daily, daily thing. It's nice to kind of come home and not have to think about getting around anywhere. You just go. I'm also concerned with the long-term impact of the two-hundred, the twenty-one hundred new rental units in our area. Since the housing collapse, most money being lent for development is for multifamily apartment complexes, apartment complexes. This is why we're seeing so many proposed, uh, so many proposed apartments throughout the city. I believe that we'll see a return in the housing market in the next couple of years, and when this happens, our area and when this happens, our area will be left with an oversupply of these parking units, leading to lower rent, lower tax dollars, lower property values, and lower quality of life. I urge you to vote against this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Patty Badnok, followed by Sam West.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patty Badnok, 40-year resident of Camelback Park Estates. 65 people signed from Optima. Many signed outside the 150 feet. I had 40% to support the legal protest when only 20 was required. I believe that the legal protest should stand. Just a few general statements. Many residents and small business owners express deep concern that our city government decisions have been focused on short-term economic gains at the expense of long-term citizen vision for the city. Existing neighborhoods are severely impacted by continuous disregard in the failure to adhere to the word "compatibility." This has resulted in applications to build anything, anywhere. I appreciate Howard Meyer's petition and your vote on a general plan reform. In the meantime, what we need is comprehensive GP enforcement, and we don't have that. This brings to mind an article written in yesterday's Arizona Republic by Vern Swabak, a well-known noted valley architect, who stated, "And so it is with any bottom-line decisions that negate the future in favor of capturing piecemeal gains in the now." The 2008 housing collapse was a result of very bad design. Now, apartment buildings, big mistake. We are routinely building in negative consequences. Next, the city will invariably go to its citizens and ask for another bond election to further raise our taxes to shore up all these problems created by ill-conceived projects. And finally, make note: we have experienced too many times promises made only to experience promises broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badnok. Next is Sam West, followed by Brian O'Keefe.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Sam West. I'm a 25-year resident of Scottsdale. I live in Cormick Ranch. And it's not my cellphone. I've got several things I want to show you that pertain to this, and they pertain to, I guess, both the entitlements and the entitlements of the adjacent property owners. What you see right now is the original plat on Portales. The orange represents no access. There's an actual one-foot no-access easement. The green, down close to Scottsdale Road, was the only access available on the north side to Chaparral. Believe that that was a part of the conditions that went with that approval when it was made. This document is, or this graphic, is a representation of what was originally approved, and I'll only show it to you for two reasons. One is to show the access as shown on the plat a moment ago. The other is to illustrate the amount of green space buffer that was between the adjacent single-family residential that had been there for 20 years when this was done and the project. This document, we're in Kansas now, by the way, was the next iteration, and I'd like to spend just a moment with it. There were 126 condominiums in this project. These are one-story units all the way across the west side. These are higher units here, and then four-story so units shielding from the Fenova Building. The arrows that are in here all represent the areas that had major open space for the property owners to the west. Finally, today, this is what we're looking at now. Do you see the difference between the alignment of the buildings in this project and what was in the previous one? In addition to that, I'd like to point out that the curved buildings that were shielding the Fenova Building are now gone and are relocated over on Goldwater, which is going to be a sound trap. I think primarily is, these are two-story units right here. These are one-story units, and I'm going to show you the impact of those next. This is, the illustration was created to show the one-story units. You see the residents here, and you see it was depressed, and you see this is a sightline above which all these neighbors, that's what they can see going up. You can also see the wall here, so they're pretty well shielded from all that. I hope that you can picture also what I said a moment ago about the dispersment of those buildings and what you're looking at right here. They're spread out. To go back to this for a moment to set the stage for the next illustration, you remember what I said about the buildings across here? And you notice the amount of open space that's still left. This is, I could find nothing in the documents posted on the website illustrating where the bottom of these buildings were. I presume the same is this, and you can see what these people are looking at. And that goes all the way down that west side, except for...
Excuse me, Sam. You're out of time. If you could please wrap it up?
Yes.
Mayor...
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Sam. This is information that actually should have been provided to us by either staff or the applicant, and I'm really glad to see this. And if there's some extra provision that needs to be made, this is really relevant, and I'd like to give him the time he needs.
Okay, if you want, from the dais, you're asking the question really to proceed, then you go ahead and add to that time, on Councilman McCullough's request.
I think the point I'm really trying to make in this is that over a 15-year time span, the people who live in the neighborhood, both to the west and the north, have time and time again acquiesced to further encroachment on the environment they lived in. And I guess I'm standing here asking the question, do we just do this over until there's nothing left? Do we just keep doing it over until instead of something this tall, it's going to be that tall? And we talk about density. It is literally a 300% increase in the number of human beings that are going to be populating the project. It is a 300% increase in traffic. I'm not even going to talk about the heat island effect, the pollution effects, and all this that goes with it. But I am going to say is that we started years ago with a 150-foot green belt down this side right here. That's what it was. It came way up in here. It's completely gone. Do we have any justification of any kind in our own minds that we can depend on a zoning that's on a piece of property next to us when we move in? The last part of this is, six or seven years ago, a qualified staff member who knew what he was talking about told me the plan for downtown was 10,000 living units. With this project, I think we're at 2,000 in this quadrant. That leaves the other three quadrants together. Thank you very much, unless you have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next would be Brian O'Keefe, followed by Mark Bouchain.
I'm Brian O'Keefe. I live at 7002 East Chaparral, which is on the northwest corner of the proposed project, and I'd like to urge you to consider approving it for a number of reasons. One is that that empty lot has been a blight on the neighborhood for more than 20 years. There's nothing happening. This is a quality project. It's the right product at the right time. And a lot of the objections are over things that were proposed years ago. 2006 is gone. It's not coming back, and this is a quality project at the right time, and I think the developers made a great effort to make it work, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Next would be Mark Bouchain, followed by Chris Schafner.
Thank you, Mayor Lane and City Councilmembers. My name is Mark Bouchain, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Ronald and Beth Harris, as well as Richard Seront. Again, my name is Mark Bouchain. First, I want to expedite the statement of Ronald and Beth Harris. They live at 4739 North 70th Street, Scottsdale, Arizona. And they write, "Dear Mayor Lane and City Councilmembers, we are writing regards to the proposed Portales Luxury Apartment Project off of Goldwater Boulevard. After several discussions and with agreed-upon provisions given by the developer, we support this project and urge you to do so as well. We look forward to a speedy approval process and a continued positive relationship with our new neighbors." The second statement here is by Richard Seront, and he has five properties in the area. I can list them here for you. 5011 North 71st Street, 5012 North 71st Street, 5016th North 71st Street, 7046 East Chaparral Street, and 71st 04 East Chaparral Street. He writes, "Progress is good, and change needs to happen in the neighborhood. I'm a longtime Scottsdale resident. My mother had having attended Scottsdale High School in her first years of opening. My grandparents lived in Fountain Hills, where they had a ranch, and there was only dirt road to get to it. When we receive the changes in the streets, architecture, and infrastructure, we see that change can be a great thing. I don't want to go back to the dirt roads. My community Camelback Park Estates was the highest density subdivision ever built in Scottsdale. I'm sure my neighbors at the time thought it was a horrible idea. Today, we are seeing progress in Scottsdale. We are creating a rich fabric of shopping, entertainment, residential, and business. Developments like these, or the ones before the council tonight, add to the vibrancy of the community. We need people to support the amenities of downtown Scottsdale, and this project will help do that. The density is much lower than it could be. The project is thoughtfully designed, and Chaparral will be beautiful. These are all positive things. The residents who live in Chaparral Road are in support of this project. We live with this traffic and the dust every day. Others do not. 25 years to wait for improvements of this site is far too long. We urge you to support this project." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bouchain. Next would be Chris Schafner, and followed by John Washington.
Hello, Chris Schafner, 7346 East Sunnyside Drive. This is a big issue and recurrent one with our city that we're facing. There's a lot of issues here, but I'll try and do my best to address the ones in the time allotted. You know, my first concern here is, I wish that public comment had more value with our city government. The way the process works now, as we see it, you know, the applicant speaks first, most, and last. I'm sure there are many people in the audience that probably wish they had a little more than their three minutes to make their case on this. They don't stand to profit from these decisions that are brought before you, but oftentimes they have an awful lot to lose. So it's frustrating to see that continually that still is the case, and I know Mr. Berry will have an opportunity to come back up and speak at length in response to what he hears up here right now. Looking at this, in the last couple of years of following the council pretty closely, most of the time seems to be spent on zoning concessions of one form or another. Some sort of project that's coming before the city that doesn't make it with the general plan or whatever, so we look for ways around that. And I think one of the things, I think it was Mr. West had made the comment, you know, do we get to a point that the deed that we have to our piece of property ever means anything? And I think that's one of the things that's at risk here when we do this. Everybody that holds a deed, payday price for that deed based on the use of that piece of land and the surrounding land around it. That's one of the primary determiners of the value of a piece of property. When we, as a city, make exceptions to rule, the problem we end up with is people's land becomes less valuable just by nature of the uncertainty. Mayor Lane has made the point a number of times that not enforcing a law is worse than not having the law, and I agree with that. I think that holds true also to development standards. If we really think our development standards are this much of an infringement upon development and growth in the city, let's change them. Let's change them wholesale, not project by project. I think this is absolutely wrong that we do what is essentially spot zoning. And when we make these decisions, we approve a big, tall building that's outside of development standards or whatever it is, and we say, "But this will be the only one." And then we see a short time later, another project comes up and says, "Look, we're not as big or as tall as this one right next door," but it's usually pretty close, and in some cases, it's actually worse. So my concern is, as we do this, we're creating uncertainty which hurts the value of everybody's piece of property, and we're chasing something that I don't believe there's a need for. We've got, you know, Mr. Berry made a comment about the trends being towards apartments. First of all, be careful with predictions. People make predictions all the time. Look where we are today. A lot of those didn't come true. Along with that, the reality of it is, the city shouldn't chase trends. The city should decide how it should look, live, and feel, and make those the requirements. So, and again, I'm out of time, so I'll leave it at that. But I do want to note, Councilman McCullough, I appreciate you asking Mr. West to continue when he was speaking of something very relevant. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schafner. Next is John Washington, followed by Lolita Tassant.
Good evening again, Mayor Lane, members of the council. My name is John Washington. I live in the Peaceful Valley neighborhood, just down the street. I transit the intersection of Chaparral and Scottsdale Road every day, twice a day, and both on a two-wheel vehicle, bicycle, and in a car, taking my kid to school. So I'm pretty familiar with this site. I know Patty. I've been to her house many times. You should go to her house. She may not want me to say that, but it's a wonderful place, as is her whole neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to say that Mr. Berry was allowed 10 minutes to come up here and speak, and I think he took about 16 minutes and 30 seconds. So if you don't mind, you know, if I run over a little bit, I appreciate if you don't cut me off like you cut off these people. You attempted to cut off three residents' comments out here, and I don't appreciate it. I don't think they appreciate it.
Mr. Washington, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
We do have a policy of three minutes. We're trying to control the testimony on the overall, so I'm...
Does that not apply to the developer and his zoning attorney?
Actually, the developer and the applicant are here to present their case, for sure. There are certainly comments that are allowed and have...
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad you brought that up because 90% of what Mr. Berry said was completely irrelevant to this case.
Mr. Washington, I'm not here to have a dialogue with you about this, but at the same time, I'm going to ask you to abide by the rules that we've set out. I have tried to give some latitude, certainly, and as one of the council members asked for, we certainly can have some consideration for that when it's asked for by a council member. But other than that, I'm going to say and ask you to please abide by, we stopped the clock for you, but to abide by the three minutes. I think it's a matter of decorum and respect for this body, so I would very much appreciate it.
Councilman McCullough, I hope you'll extend me the same courtesy then. Secondly, I'd like to say that on the topic of germane testimony, Mr. Berry wasted most of his time up here talking about stuff that is completely irrelevant. He said, he made one comment that I'd like to pick on, and that says, he's allowed, his applicant is allowed by right to more than what they're asking for. And if that's the case, that implies that, to Councilman Littlefield's earlier point, if he's allowed this by right, why are you guys even voting on it? Why are you considering this? Just let him have it. So I would submit to you that he's wrong on that point. My next point is that this is, as he said in his own words, "A 300% increase in density for the use on this site." Regardless of everything else that he said, 300% increase in density. I have two words for you on that point: Chaparral Road. We've been round and round and round on Chaparral Road, whether or not we need to widen it, whether or not we need to make improvements to that intersection. By your own report that's laying right in front of you from city staff, you're going to have 2,400 additional trips per day generated by the use on this site. To Guy Phillips' point, 300% increase. In that report, in the findings section, number four, it says that one of the approaches to that intersection operates at a level of service of E, as in echo. Traffic engineers use Level of Service LOS to address those kinds of issues. That's one level above Level of Service F, which is the worst level of service. That's one level above level of service F, which is the worst level of service you can have for an intersection. Basically means that it doesn't work. So I would submit to you that it is a significant problem. And with regard to the folks who say that if you don't like the density, you should move somewhere else. I recall the words of Betty Drake, who famously said, "If you don't like traffic in Scottsdale, you should move to Aho." Well, I would have you folks know that Camelback Park Estates has been there since 1951. Okay? This problem is encroaching on them, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Next and final request to speak on this topic is Lolita, and I think I've got it as Toussaint.
Toussaint. May I, members of the council? I live, my name is Lolita Toussaint. I live at 7107 East Orange Blossom. I have lived in Scottsdale over 27 years. We moved here in 1964. Chaparral dead-ended at the Indian Bend Wash. It was a tumbleweed-filled wash. It was not a park. Since then, there's been a lot of change. The city, I think, has grown, well, I know it's grown considerably, and in general, very well, I think. I love the public art. I think, in general, the city planners and the city council have done very well. I do not think this project follows along with what they have done in the past. The density is too high. My major concern is traffic. I do live in Camelback Park Estates. We have two entrances and exits to all of our residences. One is Orange Blossom and Scottsdale Road. The other is Chaparral. And if, when they put the current rounder in, it did not calm traffic. It completely made a mess. If this unit enters Chaparral to the west of that rounder, the traffic will back up as it did on Chaparral going west at Scottsdale Road, so far that the people who are trying to go east on Chaparral will not be able to get out of Camelback Park Estates. It is difficult during rush hour traffic to get out of Camelback Park Estates onto Scottsdale Road currently. If you go right, sometimes you can go in the extreme right-hand lane, which takes you across the bridge at Goldwater. It does not take you anywhere near the left-hand turn lane to the freeway. You have to cross three lanes of traffic and the traffic backs up completely across that intersection. I asked for and got a sign that says, "Do not block intersection." It is not enforced and the traffic does back up, forcing anybody who wants to go south or east to go across three lanes of traffic. I'm afraid that if this unit goes in with the increased traffic, we are going to be forced to make a right-hand turn and go west on Chaparral to 68th Street and then make a right-hand turn at Vista and go down to Vista at the light. This is untenable for a community that has been there, a development that has been there for 50-something years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toussaint. That completes the public testimony on item 32. Open it up to Mr. Berry, if you'd like to respond to specific items of testimony. I appreciate that.
Mayor, members of the council, certainly. First off, Ms. Toussaint is here. Is your husband here? Is your husband here this evening? Okay. I should, we should learn that, at least in my house, that the, that there can be differences of opinion. And this shows that on May 2nd, Mr. Toussaint signed a letter saying, "Please grant approval to these apartments." Obviously, there's been some conversations that occurred since May 2nd, and Mrs. Toussaint chose to spoke, to speak on behalf of both of them. All I have is something with his signature on it, Mrs. Toussaint. But it doesn't matter. Your opinions are clearly noted today and appreciated, so we were just confused. So I apologize, just trying to clarify. We also have 27 letters and 59 petitions that we'll submit to the clerk in support. Mayor, members of the council, there's been conversations about traffic. I think one of the important things to note is that in terms of traffic on Chaparral, if you read the traffic report that's included by staff, you will note that in fact, the amount of traffic on Chaparral Road, westbound, which is what people are concerned about, headed westbound, in the morning rush hour, there are eight additional cars going both ways on Chaparral Road, westbound. So there are eight additional cars. In the evening rush hour, going westbound on Chaparral, there are 29 additional cars. And over a 24-hour period, 174 more cars going westbound, which is an average of seven cars per hour. Hardly a major increase in traffic. Let's talk a little bit about concerns that adjacent neighbors may have that Mr. West pointed out. And I think one of the speakers said that, you know, that was back in the day before we had a great recession. What this graphic is, is it shows those in support of our case. Here is our site. Here is the westbound where all of those folks were concerned, that Mr. West was attempting to advocate on their behalf, their concerns about the land use adjacent to their project. And there are 11 homes along here, and eight of those 11 homes have signed in support as recently as this weekend. I would note for you that this individual right here is an architect, whose name is Bob Berg. Bob Berg sent an email to my client yesterday that says, "Two months ago, an opponent of the development came to my door," which I have to note that the three-quarter vote petitions that were submitted Friday at 11 o'clock, when the deadline is 12 o'clock, those signatures were gathered and signed in January and February and not submitted to the city until 11:03 on Friday. "Two months ago, an opponent of the development came to my door and proceeded to tell me a number of negative aspects of the project. So much so, I thought a different developer had taken over the project and had introduced an entirely new development. I felt it was important to sign a legal protest to have the opportunity to learn more about the development. I had the opportunity to meet with JLB partners' representatives and I was walked through all aspects of the development. I have learned that the proposed project is the same I was shown many months ago. It makes me pleased that the neighborhood is respected with the development. I support JLB's proposed project. Mr. Berg is an architect who lives immediately across the fence from it." Mr. West can point out that there are these negative impacts, but at the end of the day, it is the folks who live adjacent to it who make that determination for themselves. And we again have very recent submittals from eight of these 11 homeowners here. Ms. Shaw's house, I believe, is, Bobby is right here. Is that correct? That's Ms. Shaw's house. Ms. Gallagher lives in Paradise Valley off of, I think it's Chiquita up here. Is that right? Off of Chiquita. So Bobby and her husband are directly impacted, but they actually have the roundabout there rather than a lot of, than the two-story units adjacent from them. But those that have the two stories adjacent to them support the project. Note that along Chaparral Road, along Chaparral Road, look at the support we have directly across from this project from those that live on Chaparral Road. In fact, speaking of support on Chaparral Road, there are several, there are folks that own this, these homes in this cul-de-sac that previously signed the legal protest back in February. And this is an email to my client today from Richard Seront that says, "At no time have Wilson Jones and Richard Seront had any objection to the Portales development. We are in full support and we're misled by opponents to this project as to the purpose of the petition." Mayor, members of the council, let's talk a little bit about what, there was some focus on the graphics associated that were put up. This graphic was put up. Here's the west property line. This entire area was shown as green, connoting that it was landscaped open space. Mayor, members of the council, my eyes are bad, but they're not that bad. This is all parking. It isn't landscaping. And it is a 72-foot-tall hotel across the way. This was a plan from the go-go 80s, from 1985, and a lot has changed since 1985. Additionally, the graphic was put up that said they were all one-story units across from those folks on the west. Not true. This is 28DR 2000 number three, from 2002, it looks like. And you will note that these units are connoted as two stories. Mr. West had this entire area done green. You know what is back here? Are the driveways and the roads back here, not landscaping. That's right, Mr. West. There's a different plan. There were a multitude of different plans, and you chose to select those that proceeded to make your case the best instead of giving the whole panoply of what the cases were over time. Now, only lawyers are supposed to do that, not architects.
Want to start a dialogue? I'm sorry, back to point. Please respond to the issues that you raised, that were raised.
I think that those are the major issues, which really seem to focus on traffic and the adjacencies next door. I will note that those individuals who live next door to the west, whose major investment is there, eight of those 11 people are in support of this project. In terms of the too many apartments, I think a fact which is sometimes forgotten is that the only apartments that have been approved in downtown recently are, in fact, the Blue Sky Apartments. Additionally, in the last economic boom that we have, there were approximately 5,000 condo units that were converted, that were converted from apartments to condos. So that stock of apartments were taken out of production and turned into condos. So in fact, in the last boom cycle, 5,000 units of potential rental units were taken out of production and turned into condos. Mayor, members of the council, this is a project that will provide $65 million boost to our downtown. It's sensitive. We have strong support from people in Optima, strong support from people on Chaparral, and strong support from those that live immediately west. Happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Yes, we will have some, starting with Councilman McCullough.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions of Mr. Berry, but I do have a couple of questions of staff. First of all, there's been reference to the protest and the negation of the protest as a result of signatures that came in and Mrs., is it, is it La Shaw? Shaw? I think the city attorney got a copy of this, Bruce. Would you, would you address that to start with?
Certainly, Councilman. With all due respect to my colleagues at the bar, I believe they've just gotten a little wrong on this. The Moser case was a 1928 Arizona Supreme Court case dealing with improvement districts under a state statute. They had very specific requirements regarding filing dimes. And the effect of the filing of legal protests under that statute was to stop the project. It was not to require a supermajority. So it's a very different case and a very different context. The fact of the matter is, is that the state statute that allows for legal protests in, the legal protests that we're, protests that we're dealing with now, does not have any statement in it as to when legal protests need to be filed or when withdrawals of legal protests need to be made. So the state statute, the state legislature has basically left that determination to the cities. They've also, in the state statutes, stated that the zoning administrator is to interpret the city's zoning code. Our zoning code has a specific requirement for when legal protests have to be filed. It does not, contrary to what was stated earlier, have a specific requirement as to when they have to be withdrawn. The zoning administrator has, not in this case, not just in this case, but in a number of cases, interpreted our code to mean that legal protests have to be filed by noon on Friday, the day before the, I'm sorry, the Friday of the week before the hearing. But the withdrawals of legal protests can be made at any time up to the time that the council takes action. I believe that this interpretation of our code is clearly legally supportable and therefore clearly within the discretion of the zoning administrator. The state legislature has entrusted the decision on the interpretation of the code to the zoning administrator and has also left to the, to our code to determine when legal protests must be withdrawn. So I believe that the zoning administrator's interpretation is the correct one, and again, with all due respect to my colleagues, that they are incorrect.
Okay. Thank you. The second question I have is for staff as well. Mr. West put up a plan, a site plan, that showed the buffering differently, and Mr. Berry had a plan that showed approximately the same footprint, although he referenced two-story units where Mr. West had referenced one-story units. What is, what is the site plan that is currently approved by the current entitlement?
Mayor Lane and Councilman McCullough, the current plan at the west edge of the property is approved for two-story units.
That's not the question. The question is, do you have a copy of the site plan that is approved with the current entitlement?
Yes, we do have a copy.
Would you put that up on the screen, please?
If you'll give me a moment to locate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is it, is it similar to either of the two that we've already seen?
Ron, would you mind if we go ahead to Councilman Littlefield?
Actually, I have, I have some more questions, and they're, I'd be addressing the same people, so I'm, I'm.
Okay, well, we'll hold then. That's fine.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll be happy to come back if you've got, if you've got questions that aren't.
Push your button again, and we'll, as Councilman Littlefield's done, we'll come back to you. Now, Councilman Littlefield?
One of my main questions, it's just, this is the, you know, this is just more of the same that we've been going through for the last 10 years. To believe this is a good idea, you've got to somehow believe that tripling the number of residents and tripling the number of units is going to not result in crowding and not going to cause a traffic problem. And you know, I've heard that for the last 10 years, and as we keep approving this stuff, guess what? We get more crowding and we get more traffic. And one of the interesting things here is, we didn't even really talk about the impact that this will have on traffic on Chaparral Road, not west of Scottsdale, but east of Scottsdale, and particularly Scott, Chaparral between Miller and Hayden. All right? The people coming in here into that, which is already crowded and where the people in Villa Monterey are already fighting persistent attempts to condemn houses there to widen that road, this is just going to make it worse. You know, I've heard for 10 years, "Well, yeah, we're going to put more people here, but it's live, work, play." But you know what? The bottom line is, is the traffic statistics are still the same. Only a tiny fraction of Scottsdale residents don't use their cars. The idea that people are going to move in here and walk to work, first of all, I don't know that there's that many jobs nearby anyway, even if they were. What will happen is, people will move here and we'll have one car per resident, and we're going to bring hundreds of more cars here, and that's going to put more pressure on Chaparral Road and Scottsdale Road, and it's going to create more crowding. And you know, the persistent theme I hear that somehow putting more apartments and more density downtown is going to be good for economic development. Scottsdale is a sales tax-driven city. Having more residential development does not make this city richer because those of us who live here now are going to have to pay for the infrastructure to make that happen. So the idea that this is going to be, that not going to create crowding, that it's not going to increase traffic, and that somehow it's going to be good for the economy is simply not true. This is going to, if we approve it tonight, lower the. This is going to, if we approve it tonight, lower the quality of life for the people who live near it. And not only is it going to lower the quality of life for people who live near it, it's going to lower the quality of life for people who live anywhere in downtown, because they're going to have to put up with the extra traffic, and they're going to have to put up with the extra crowding and all of that. And I, the other thing I hear, and I've heard this for 10 years, "Oh, well, it's an empty lot, and we have to do something about it." You know what? An empty lot is better than a bad project, which is going to cause problems and make life harder for the people who live there. So the answer to that is, leave the lot empty until someone comes up with a good project that isn't going to have a negative impact on the people around it. If it's a bad project, it's a bad idea, and we shouldn't approve it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCullough, please. It's not theater. Applause is not necessary, but thank you. I appreciate it. We don't want booing either. So I appreciate reframing from it.
I think Councilman Littlefield forgot to say, too, that the economic vitality associated with a desirable project is the same as for an undesirable one. Weren't you?
What?
We'll go back to where we were.
Yeah.
No cave for you.
Anyway, thank you, Councilman, and Councilman McCullough, if you're.
So did staff come up with a copy of the?
Mayor, Councilman McCullough, we have a copy of it.
Staff, does that look like the footprint or the site plan for the current entitlement? Okay. In looking at that, where's the property line for your development?
Mayor, Councilman McCullough, the property line is along there.
Okay. And the buildings that are shown nearest the west wall that are kind of the subject of our discussion are how high?
26 feet, two stories.
26 foot, two stories. Okay. That helps very much. Thank you with that. So the next question, would you leave that up there, anyway, please?
Sorry?
Thank you. What is the current zoning on the subject site?
Mayor Layden, Councilman McCullough, the zoning designation is the same, and is not proposed to be changed.
Thank you. And what is that zoning?
It's downtown regional commercial office type two, planned block development.
Planned block development?
Downtown overlay.
And what are the buffering guidelines for that zoning?
There is no requirement for a rear yard setback.
All right.
So if you're talking about the west property line?
I am.
That would be the rear, and there is no required rear yard setback.
Okay. When we discussed that zoning to start with, what did you call it, planned block development?
Yes.
Was there a discussion, or is there anything in any of our plans that discuss the need for some kind of buffering between that zoning, which is very intense, and I believe allows residential and commercial and retail use?
I believe our downtown plan speaks to transitional, between non-town town areas, which the property to the west is not in the downtown plan area.
Right, right. And so would seem like the logical recipient, if you will, of a buffering plan.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah. I mean, would our downtown plans that we've had and that zoning normally contemplate some kind of a transition? And do you see a transition here between this development and the single-family homes located directly behind it?
It does speak to buildings taller than 38 feet have a setback requirement, in which case, and this is not taller than 38 feet.
Okay. So you would categorize what's proposed here, as well as what's, excuse me, what's included on the site on the screen, as well as perhaps the applicant's proposal to be a transition, a reasonable transition between uses?
Yes, we would.
Then, for right now, I don't have any more questions, except that I am completely sympathetic to the people who live along that rear property line. Thank you. Along that west property line, in contrast to the gentleman who stood up and said that everybody who lives in that area should embrace downtown living. I don't subscribe to that, and that is frankly nonsense to me. We need to protect the neighborhoods that have been there for a long time, and they have to be able to depend on us to make decisions that aren't in total conflict with the lifestyles that we've seen them have. So I guess that was an editorial comment, but nonetheless, it's how I feel. So, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, the Councilman McCullough raised the issue of, do our downtown plans address these transitions where you have single-family homes adjacent to the downtown? And the answer to that is yes. Unfortunately, neither staff nor I have the diagram that was adopted as part of the downtown plan. They gave an example of how those transitions could occur. I think it was both in the downtown task force, and I think in the downtown plan. And we actually did a comparison of that early on in our studies of the site plan. It had two different graphics, one that showed where you had an alleyway adjacent to the property line with single-family homes, and then the downtown area, and one where you did not have an alleyway, and we have both conditions here adjacent to our west property line. We actually did that analysis, and it showed that we actually exceeded the suggested transitions that were identified with cross-section drawings in those two plans.
Well, thank you, Councilman. One of the things that I think has been addressed in the questions, Councilman McCullough, and that was the transition. I was curious about that, too. Do we have a current layout for the current site plan? I know we've just been looking at the one from, and I don't know what year it was, but those properties that are on the west side, those are two-story buildings?
Mayor, members of the council, those are one-story existing residential that have been there for an extended period of time.
No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about within the plans that are indicated on that, what would be the western boundary.
These are 26 feet in height, two stories all. Interestingly, because of the grade change from Chaparral down to here, there's about a seven-foot drop in grade from here. It goes seven feet lower than Chaparral, and then, when it gets down to here, it's about one foot lower than the adjacent grade. So when you're up here in this area, these homes are, these units are actually 20 feet. They read as if they're 20 feet from the homes to the west.
What are they actually?
They're 26 feet from our site, the bottom of our site, but because there's a grade change, it only reads 20 feet from the other side, because basically they're being built in a six-foot hole on our side of the property line.
What are the heights of the homes that are immediately across that boundary?
They are, I don't know, they're probably 14, 15 feet high, is my guess. They were built back in a substantial period of time ago, decades ago, although the current zoning would allow them to go 30 feet in height, so someone could add a second story, they could add an addition, they could tear down a house and build a 30-foot, two-story home.
Okay. The other is, I was reading on a matrix that you've got here on Portales Residential, and it's making comparison between the existing approved development in the same zoning to what's being proposed. Obviously, going from a maximum height of 65 down to 50 maximum height, it does go to the 13 dwelling units per acre versus the 38 that we've got indicated, and is indication of a, has been an issue expressed. But it then goes on the open space. There's two items that it indicates on the open space. The open space on the existing development plan is 198,000 versus 174,000 square feet. Yeah?
And I would note, Mayor, members of the council, that the open space required in downtown, under the existing zoning, is none. The prior plan at 198,000, we have about 174,000. In terms of the density, we're allowed 50. The prior was 13. We're at 38 and a half. The building height, we're permitted 65. The last plan at 65, we're at 50 on 13 units, 1-3 units. The floor area ratio, which is the amount of building you can put on the land, is a 1.8. The prior plan was at 1.02 for a total building square footage of 425, almost 426,000. We actually have 19,000 less square footage, square feet of development on the site at lower heights.
And a lower FAR.
Yes.
The other thing that, well, I was just, really just looking at it from the standpoint of that open space requirement. I don't know what constitutes on this site, open space versus, you know, parking lots versus grassed areas, or open areas, or tennis courts. Do they all qualify?
Yes, yeah, they do. And Mayor, members of the council, I think we need to also address Councilman McCullough's earlier question about setbacks.
Yeah.
The setback on the front is 20 feet. On the side is zero, and the rear is zero. And that's what is required under the downtown ordinance. So against that west property line, theoretically, you could have the buildings right on the property line. The one that was approved back in 2005 has a front of 20 feet from the curb, 18 feet from the D cell lane on Goldwater, and 20 feet from the planned curb on Chaparral. We are 20 feet from the planned curb, 18 feet from the D cell lane on Goldwater, which is the same as this one, and 28 feet from the planned curb on Chaparral. We are actually eight feet further back from Chaparral than the plan that was put up earlier. I'm sorry, 35. My client just reminded me we're at 35.
Mr. Berry, on that column to the far right, on the bottom there, what is the, is there a setback, even though zero is what's acceptable? What is the setback on the, what we might consider the rear, or the, I guess, the western boundary?
It undulates, it varies. It's not a solid edge. The minimum, I think, is 23 feet?
21 and a half feet?
And the average is close to 24, given the undulation of the buildings. They move back and forth.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Councilman McCullough?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize your question.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, it doesn't appear that we have any further questions from the council, so I would consider whether there's a position to be made, or a motion to be made. Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 9040 declaring Portales Residential Development Plan, including the development standards as a public record, and Adopt Ordinance 4013, approving to modify the original zoning stipulations, and amended development standards, and a new development plan for 369 multifamily residential units on 9.6 acres. Is that sufficient?
I'm presuming so.
Okay. And I'm very sensitive to the neighbors, but what I'm seeing here is, this project is less than what the current zoning would allow. So, you know, I can't see holding this up. So, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but I think we do need to include in the motion that the PBD findings have been met.
And that the PBD findings have been met.
Second.
All right. Second with the second, I'd like to speak to her.
Yes, please, Mayor. I thank you all for coming out tonight. Pretty spirited discussion, and it seems in a case like this, it brings out some pretty divergent viewpoints about how development should occur. But I think a lot of times, they say the devil's in the detail, and I think when you actually look at the project, what's approved and what's being requested, there's not that much of a variance. In fact, I think there's a pretty good improvement on what's allowable now. And I think when you also look at the character area of downtown, and that we're looking to add vibrancy and more mixed-use type of developments, I think this fits into a lot of the character that we're looking for in our downtown. I realize that there are some difficulties with how that meshes with the single-family on the west side, but I think the general area, this is a good use and a good plan. I don't think we spend enough time talking about Chaparral and the improvements that are going to be made on Chaparral, because I think, as we move forward, the future, that Chaparral will be enhanced by this project, and the enhancements and the things that you required, are required to do as far as the roundabouts and the additional landscaping and that kind of thing. I think that'll help tremendously. So I know it's tough when you live next to a vacant lot for 25 years, and you envision what it's going to be, and it changes over time. And I think that's part of, you know, what it's like to live next door to a vacant lot, not knowing what's going to happen. But the market finally comes in, money finally is able to determine, hey, this is the kind of thing that's going to work in this part of town, and I think that's what we're asked to decide, is that something that we want? And I think the property and the way it's going to be used is going to be an asset to Scottsdale. So I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Littlefield?
Yeah, I love the part how, "Well, we should go ahead and approve this, because it could be worse." Well, you know, that's the old, "If you don't let us build our bad project, we'll build a toxic waste dump here." It's the same as the old empty lot trick. An empty lot is better than a bad project, and just because it isn't as bad as it could be, doesn't change the fact that it's bad. We're supposed to exercise some judgment up here. We're not just sort of mindlessly supposed to approve right up to the limit. We're supposed to protect the neighbors and the residents, and to use our heads, and to say, "You know, maybe this isn't such a good idea." And I'm sorry, crowding and traffic does not equal vibrancy. This project is no more vibrant than I'm Miss America. It simply isn't. It's going to be an apartment development with three times the number of people, and it was previously approved. It's going to bring hundreds of more cars downtown. It's going to put more pressure on Chaparral Road, especially east of Scottsdale Road. It's a bad project. It's not vibrant, it's not progress, it's not economic development. It's crowding, 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 and it's part of the, one more nail in the coffin of Scottsdale's special character.
Thank you, Councilman. He's absolutely right. We do need to make judgments here, and it's not an easy task all the time when you try to weigh the considerations on the overall property, the rights of the owner of the property, the zoning that's existing right now, development agreement that's in place, whether this is an improvement or whether it's a detriment. I think there's at least a developing thought that this is an improvement to what was approved previously. Certainly, it's movement, and it's not, you just don't move just for movement's sake. But you also don't say no to everything that comes down the pike. We do make judgments here, and they've gone both directions. You know, this is, certainly, there's sensitivity, and there's concern about any kind of new development, how it impacts the surrounding area, and what impact it has on our traffic and our city on the overall. We do have to weigh those things. We do the best job, we have a professional staff of people that we do trust, and that makes some determinations on this. It's not always just an absolute. Frankly, if it were just a blank check, this probably would look a whole lot different than what we're talking about here. And that's what happens when you work with folks, with their property, with something that's going to potentially be, well, we'd want it to be viable. We want something that's going to work. We're not looking to have something that's going to be shuttered. And when other people's money is at risk, they're taking that risk. We're not paying for them to build this. This isn't a city decision alone. It does go to property owners as well. But the impact on neighborhoods around it is always something we consider, and I think we're considering it here as well. My concern, after, at the end of the testimony, really was whether or not we were following the downtown plan as far as the buffering. And I got an absolute, or I think as clearly as I could be stated, I suppose, an absolute that it is complying with that buffering within the downtown plan. And that's something the Citizens Commission put together. It wasn't us up here. They just made those decisions on how the downtown would be developed. That was one of them. I was interested in. I was interested in the setbacks. I'm, I guess I'm dumbfounded that a zero setback would be allowed in this property. I'm certainly glad it's somewhere in the average of twenty-one, twenty-two feet, which may not seem like a lot, but if it is, in fact, a building that's going to be somewhere in an area of about an effective twenty feet, it does have a reasonable matchup with the community around it. So I'd have to say that the traffic, you know, we hope that the studies are right with regard to that. The open spaces, it sounds to me for, in a zoning that doesn't even require any, this is a substantial, I think, concession at one hundred and seventy-eight thousand or one hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet on that. Buffer transition, I always already talked about. Setbacks were answered. I was a little surprised that from our table here, our information that was provided to this council, a couple of things. One, I would have liked to have seen the comparison with the previous recommendations on the site, and I think it stands favorably in most instances. And I would have liked to have seen that in the proposed development plan column, that we would have indicated that there was a setback on the west side or what we might call the rear side. It's not indicated here. I mean, it was answered in a question, but I'm a little surprised it wasn't here to begin with. So I support the motion. There's others that will speak toward it as well. Councilwoman McCullough.
Excuse me. I'll be supporting the motion as well. The project that's proposed here is an improvement over the previous one that was approved when, a few years ago. I don't remember exactly when it was, but I think one of the things that I look for, and I really appreciate the people who've contacted me to give me their points of view, I've heard from a lot of people, but the people that I believe make the best argument about the appropriateness of the project are the people who live directly across the street from the project along Goldwater and the people that live across the street on Chaparral. And from what I could see on the map, nearly one-hundred percent of those people were for this project. So I fully understand the people who don't like it and would prefer nothing be built there, but the people who are most impacted are for this, and they're definitely going to be looking at the project from their homes, then I believe that it's incumbent upon us to make, to make a determination that this is a good project for this area and to go ahead and approve it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman McCullough.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just, this is a hard decision, but I have to say that the most persuasive thing that I see on here is that the eight homeowners most impacted by this project, as I see it, and that would be the eight homeowners who live directly west and adjacent to this, support it. And looking at the neighborhood support for any project has to weigh heavily in any council member's decision, and I think that's the case here. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I see no further comments from the dais here or from any other source, so I think we're now ready to vote. Okay. Those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote, and those opposed with a nay. Register your vote. Aye.
Aye.
Of course, we're missing, we're missing Councilwoman Borowski, so we do have the ayes taken with a five to one, with Councilman Littlefield opposing.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating, the applicant, as well as testimony from all. Move on to the next item, which is Item Thirty-Three, and this is a speci, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Just for the record, Councilwoman Borowski will not be returning to the dais. Time is approximately eight o'clock. Okay, we will then move on to Item Thirty-Three, is a Special Revenue Fund for Tourism Development. The request here is to adopt Ordinance Number Forty-Eighteen, establish a Special Revenue Fund for Tourism Development effective July first, two thousand and twelve. And this would have, which would call for receipt of transient lodging, what we commonly refer to as bed taxes and lease rentals earned from the Fairmont Princess Hotel. Allow for the use of such funds according to the modified allocation policy. And you know, I'm going to let the presenter go on for the rest of, that there is an adopt, a request to adopt Ordinance Forty-Nineteen and Adopt Ordinance Forty-Twenty, which I'm sure lend themselves to that process. So if you would, please.
Okay. Mayor Lane and members of the council, Lee Ullary of Finance and Accounting. Just some history here. Back in March of two thousand and ten, the voters elected to increase the bed tax from three percent to five percent effective July one of two thousand and ten, with half of the money to be used for destination marketing and the other half for tourism development. Currently, the receipts from the bed tax are deposited into the city's general fund, and then fifty percent of those monies are transferred out for marketing purposes, and the city is utilizing the Scottsdale CDB to do the marketing for the city. The remaining fifty percent is kept within the general fund and was allocated based on a decision by this council back in June of two thousand and eleven, based on the percentages that you see here. The first recommendation that staff has is that all the bed tax receipts should be not deposited into the general fund, but that a Special Revenue Fund for Tourism Development be established, and that all bed tax receipts be deposited into this fund. And the reason for this is for more transparency and ease of tracking. So that's one of the first recommendations that the staff has, is that this new Special Revenue Fund for Tourism Development be created. The second recommendation the staff has is to change the allocation process. Currently, the allocation is based on a percentage of the total bed tax receipts every year. These are fixed, so the percentages can change from year to year as the bed tax receipts Currently, what is happening is on the left-hand side of the screen here, and based on the fiscal year eleven, twelve, estimated bed tax revenues of about twelve million, the allocations are as shown on the screen here, with twenty-four percent allocated to the general fund, approximately one-point-four-six million dollars. Eighteen percent would be going to event retention and development, eight percent towards administrative services, and the remainder, or what we used to call this the left-hand side of the pie, devoted towards capital projects, with one wedge being a swing wedge that could be towards capital projects or the event retention and admin categories. The middle column shows our estimated bed tax revenues increasing to thirteen-point-four million dollars for the fiscal year twelve, thirteen. Based on the current allocation methodology, the sizes of the pie wedges would increase, but otherwise remain the same. So the amount going, or staying within the general fund would be one-point-six million dollars, one-point-two million towards event retention, and you can see the other numbers there. The amount for the capital projects would go from six-hundred thousand up to six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. There would still be four multi-year commitments to capital projects and the one swing vote indicated in the orange box. What staff is recommending that is instead of percentage of allocations, that they be fixed-dollar amounts, and that is shown in the alternate twelve, thirteen column on the right-hand side. Staff is recommending that the general fund be allocated one-point-five million dollars every year, no matter what amount of bed tax receipts are received. The amount to go towards event retention and development would be one-point-two million, with a half a million towards administration, and the swing vote, or, excuse me, the swing wedge would also be a half a million dollars. Fixing the remaining capital portions at six-hundred thousand dollars per commitment would allow additional wedges of the pie to be created for future capital projects. So instead of having four multi-year commitments for capital projects, there could be five in this instance. If you decide to do this change, it would involve an amendment to the Financial Policy Twenty-One A, which currently has the allocation based on percentages, and it would be switched to allocation based on these dollar amounts. The third recommendation that staff has involves the Princess Hotel lease revenues that the city receives. These lease revenues are driven by the fact that the city owns the land that a portion of the Princess Hotel is developed on. There was a contract entered into in the eighties in which a percentage of the receipts of the hotel are paid to the city. These revenues have historically been considered tourism-related and were used primarily to help offset improvements to the TPC Course. The TPC Course was built at the same time about as the Princess Resort. Since two thousand and four, the lease revenues have been included as general fund unencumbered receipts as the last TPC Course financing was paid off. There was an amendment recently to the lease in which the minimum annual payment from the Princess is set at one-point-five million dollars. Staff is recommending that these are tourism-related dollars and should also be included in this new fund that's been established. And that's depicted here on the far right-hand side. At the bottom of the table, you'll see that we have still the estimated bed tax revenues of thirteen-point-four million, but the additional one-point-five million dollars of hotel lease revenues are also included. The fifty percent of the bed tax that is dedicated to marketing would stay the same, and that's the pink bar that is shown here, and is fifty percent of the thirteen-point-four million dollars of bed tax revenues. The remainder of the stacked bar graph depicts the additional one-point-five million dollars of Princess lease revenues that we are recommending be utilized towards capital projects. It would create two and a half new wedges of the pie, shown at the top, six-hundred thousand dollars each. So two and a half times that's the one-point-five million dollars. The fourth recommendation staff has to make is, relates to the current code that describes the purpose of the Tourism and Development Commission. Currently, the language reads that the TDC gives advice to the council on the bed tax funds. We're recommending that be changed to include, that they give you advice on the tourism development funds, so it would encompass these additional tourism revenues related to the Princess Hotel lease. In addition, there are some changes to what we consider to be restrictive language on the type of advice that they give you, giving them broader ability to just advise you directly on how those revenues should be spent. We have had two meetings with the Tourism Development Commission, and they are in support of all these recommended changes. We are recommending that these become effective on July one of two thousand and twelve. And this slide here is our summary and recommendation. In addition, the bottom bullet point is that we would like direction to staff regarding any negative impact to the general fund, that it would, we recommend that it be offset by use of the unreserved fund balance. We do expect that the negative impact in twelve, thirteen would be insignificant, about one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're open for questions.
Thank you very much, Lee. We do have one request to speak on this item, and we probably have questions after that if you want to stand by it. Guy Phillips.
Mayor, members of council, Guy Phillips, seven-one-three-one, he's Chaya Street, twenty year resident. I don't know if I read a different Item Thirty-Three, but this, what this is really about is to take the Princess Resort lease funds from the general fund and put it into a special tourism-related fund and cover it with unreserved funds. This is exactly what is wrong with our government today, taking money from one place to use in another without a revenue source to cover it. If you simply want to get more tourism dollars, I suggest you apply the ordinance to the bed tax portion from the Princess Resort only. The city has many leased properties. If this passes, are you going to extend this ordinance to all city-owned leased properties? A lease is a lease. Just because it was a resort doesn't mean all money from it is for tourism. You should not be taking lease money out of the general fund and then leaving the general fund short a million dollars, forcing you to cover that amount from the unreserved fund, which we'll have to do year after year. In two thousand and fourteen, if the federal government healthcare mandate takes effect, it could cost the state of Arizona over a billion dollars. You can bet a dime to a doughnut that the state will push this cost onto the municipalities, as Scottsdale better have the money to cover it, or a huge tax increase will be on our way. I noticed this idea was a suggestion of a couple council members. Was there a pet project they want and need to raid the general fund to pay for it? Where is the transparency in government? Also, do we really need to create another bureaucracy with more staff, more benefits, and more pensions to cover this? I urge the remaining council members to vote no to this backdoor theory from our general fund and continue the policy of living within our means and saving for our future.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. That's the extent of our public comment, so if we, Councilman Littlefield.
If there's no other questions, I move we do it.
Motion to accept.
I second that.
Would the second like to speak?
Yes, please. Just a couple of comments. I think it's a good idea to take this money and put it into a separate fund. It's easier to keep track of. Talk about transparency, you know, if you set something aside and shine a light on it, you can keep track of it better. And we had a problem before when the Princess lease, when we were done paying for the TPC, the Princess lease money just went into the general fund and paid for all kinds of general revenues. And then when we needed to update the TPC and other golf course amenities that are tourist-related, we had to take that right out of the general fund, so, and we lost that money. So this is a way to reallocate that money, which I think what it was originally intended for. I know there's some discussion about that, but I think that Princess lease money should be used for golf course improvements and other tourism-related infrastructure. I also like the fact that we fixed the amounts for administration, advanced the general fund, as opposed to having those float as a percentage basis. I like the fact that those kind of overhead costs are fixed, and then when we do grow this fund, as tourism tax revenues grow, bed tax revenues grow, we have more capital infrastructure. And I think that's what the public wanted when they voted to increase the bed tax, was to have more allocated towards capital infrastructure. And as we keep increasing our wedges, as we like to call them, this will allow us to do that. So, and then I think some also thought has gone into, if we have other tourism-related monies coming into the city, we can put them into this fund, keep track of them, and use them for tourism-related projects. So I'm fully supportive of this, and, and the last point, I was unaware of that there were going to be any general fund negative impacts. Can you explain that a little bit more, please?
Mayor Lane, Councilman Robbins. Currently, the way this is written, the one-point-five million dollars that would be going to the general fund will not, so there would be normally a one-point-five million dollar shortage in the general fund. Next week, at the council meeting on May fifteenth, you'll hear a recommendation related to some TPC improvements that currently are included in the budget for next year of just under one-point-four million dollars, and it's going to be recommended that they also be removed from the general fund, and that's why when you take away one-point-five million in revenues and one-point-four million in expenses, you're really only impacting the general fund about a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. There is a motion on the table, and I, with respect to the folks who would still like to speak to this, but the motion on the table, only, does it only reflect the first ordinance? I- I want to make sure. Got it all? Okay, so.
Trying to be efficient.
But without reference to the specific ordinances we've got? Okay.
I actually said all that, I think. Didn't I?
I think, I think it was a very brief. But at the same time.
Nodding your head, that's.
It was okay. What's on the screen there?
Exactly.
But, okay, thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Millhaven.
Yeah, I'm okay with the special fund, with putting the bed tax in there and the allocation. I've long thought we should do it by dollar amount rather than percent. I, though, am not ready to say that the Princess lease should go into this fund. You know, citizens approved increasing the bed tax to do tourism development. I think we've got lots of money to do that. And if the citizens own, the city owns the property, to have the lease payments go and support city operations, I think makes perfect sense. I mean, tourists create demand for services that the general fund pays for, so it makes sense to me that the Princess lease would go into the general fund and pay for those services. If however we make the decision at the next meeting to say we want the lease to go toward the TPC improvements, then I'd be willing to come back to it at that time, but I'm not going to support the motion. I think we need to defer putting the Princess lease into this fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The idea, I suppose, and I certainly support all of this, that we've got on the board without specific reference to the ordinances. One of the things that happened in years gone by is the fact that the construction and thus the debt service for the TPC was supported by those lease payments. That was the overall idea, even though it wasn't memorialized in the final agreements, that's how it acted out for the first 20-some years of its, of its development and payback of that, of that debt that was incurred to build the golf course. Some years ago, it was decided that since that was completed, that we would now, rather than save, reserve, or fund the eventual reconstruction over a similar period of time of the TPC, it was decided by the then-city manager to move it into the general fund and use it for other obligations. Obviously, our entire tourism infrastructure is dependent upon having some source of revenues when we need to revitalize or rehabilitate them and build them back. And that's, that is certainly the case we have with the TPC right now. So I think that it's altogether appropriate, particularly now as we establish a special revenue fund, which is intent on supporting our tourism infrastructure, to try to make it sustainable without having to go to the general fund and thus impact, or frankly, as in totally consistent with what the, the general voters told us when they passed the, the bed taxes last time, that we would apply a certain percentage of those monies, and we would look to try to make our tourism infrastructure sustainable. So that's, that's the intent here on the overall. It is the ultimate of transparency. That's why we're sitting here talking about it. It wasn't in the past talked about. So we, we have put it out there to consider how we would maintain our tourism infrastructure with tourism dollars and related tourism dollars, as we have in the past. So I'm, I certainly support this 100%. Councilwoman Clapp.
I think I'm running into the same problem that Councilwoman Millhavens had on this, is that we haven't approved the TPC improvements yet. And let me ask a question. When that comes to us for potential approval, is the recommendation that the funds would come out of this fund?
Councilwoman Clapp and members of council, that recommend, or that presentation will be to you next week, and it will be to you as the, as the representatives of the special tourism fund, so that's where they'll be seeking the funding from, yes. The other clarifying point, we haven't talked about it a great deal in the budget, but as Ms. Gillery made the point, or made the statement, the current budget that you've been looking at for a number of weeks has really had two embedded items, and it is, has of course had the revenue from the special, from the Princess Hotel, but it's also had as a portrayed expense, the improvements to the TPC course and the sanctuary course. So it's had both revenue and expense in the budget. We're now pulling out the revenue next week. Dan Worth will make a presentation on the project, pull out the expense, and make the request to the special revenue fund for tourism, yes.
Okay, then, then under those circumstances, I would support this and have the Princess Reven, Princess Hotel revenues go into this fund with the understanding that if we do approve the TPC improvements, they're going to be coming out of the fund. So that would be my comment about it.
That is the intention, but yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. There's no further comments or cards. I think we're now ready to vote on the motion that's on the table, and it's been seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by aye, and those with, oppose with a nay. Aye?
Aye.
The motion passes forward to the vice mayor, Millhaven, and Councilman McCullough opposing. So that completes that item. Thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Gillfow. Move on to the next item, which is our item 34. It's a special election for a general obligation bond program, and the request here is a presentation, discussion, and possible direction to staff regarding the preparation of the documents and scheduling of a general obligation bond election for November 6, 2012, to run concurrently with the general election, and direction on the composition of the proposed bond program questions. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, members of the council. We're here tonight to close out the activities for the last year concerning the bond program and the bond task force process. What we're asking tonight is we're seeking council's direction on scheduling a special election for a general obligation bond program, either for this year or for next year. In reviewing the process, it started just about a year ago when we had staff meetings to focus on strategies for a bond program. Moved through some approvals by the city council in late spring of last year. Spent 18 meetings with the bond task force over nine months, focused on a bond program recommendation. In January 10th of this year, we gave you a quick update from, of the progress of the task force. And very recently, at the work session on March 27th, we reviewed the task force recommendations, and it shows on the screen as tentative, but you officially approved and accepted the bond task force recommendation with the consent agenda this evening. The program that the task force recommended was a $160 million program, approximately, divided into four questions. The first question, just over $20 million, $29 million, excuse me, on seven projects. Second question, focused on public safety in courts, at $44.7 million, 10 projects. Third question, $27.9 million, at seven projects for neighborhood flood control. And the final question, transportation in streets, $58.9 million, 10 projects. The work session on March 27th, some additional projects were recommended by, for consideration by the city council. Those are listed on your screen in front of you, the first being the Greyhawk Off Leash Dog Area. That would most likely fit under the community services question. Estimated cost for that is about $3 million. Second project that was requested was the Civic Center West End Mall improvements. This is the western entry into the Civic Center Mall off of Brown Street. This would lower the grade, do some significant improvements in that area to increase visibility and pedestrian friendliness of that area. Again, would fit most likely under community services and parks question, approximately $6 million. And the third request was consideration of a northeast quadrant parking garage, which was on the original task list. This would fall under transportation and streets question, at $7.4 million. These are in addition to the task force recommendations. Task force did not take any action on these, except going back to any of their original deliberations. So these are additional projects to a potential bond program. So looking at it in summary, two programs have been presented, alternatives have been presented to the council, one being the original task force recommendation totaling 160, $160.5 million. And if council chooses to take the additional projects, that would increase the bond amount to $177.2 million. And I believe you can see, whoops, excuse me, you can see on the screen in the lower question in green, the two increases to those particular questions with that. Couple of key dates, the council will need to, excuse me, council will need to take action by June 5, 2012, to call an election for 2012. Final ballot language for the fall election would be due to the county on July 24. August 8 is when arguments are required to be filed for publicity pamphlet. October 11 is the earliest day that early ballots can be mailed out. And then finally, election day would be on November 6. Question had been brought up about the cost of the election. Under a 2012 scenario, with just the one assumption that we will have to go to a general election in the fall, that we won't fill all seats in the, in the August primary, there would be no additional cost for adding the bond questions. If we move the election to 2013, and the election is the only, the bond election is the only item on it, it would be a $377,000 estimated cost. If other items are added to that election, it would reduce the cost. In the March 2012 election this year, we had a franchise election. Southwest Gas actually paid half the cost of that election. And just a quick note at the bottom, bond elections, anything that incurs secondary assessed, or secondary property taxes on the electric that are voted on, have to be held in a November timeframe. So it's the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. So we're asking direction from council tonight. We've provided a couple of options, and these could be modified, of course, at the council's direction. The first option being requesting staff to move forward with paperwork to schedule a bond election in 2012 concurrent with the November 6 election. The program, the initial recommendation is a $177.2 million program comprising the four questions you see, or as otherwise modified by the council. We've offered up a second alternative, which would be to push the election in 2013. What's important about this is we would continue outreach and education of the general public, and we would focus with the current bond task force program as the basis for moving forward, but would probably be a different program. We're not sure exactly what the work plan would be, but the potential for getting another public group engaged in the process would be possible, but we try to return to council within 30 to 60 days with a revised work, work plan to focus on 2013 election. So with that, staff is here to answer any questions, including our capital, various capital departments, or capital, departments representing our capital representatives. And if there's anything we can answer, we'd be glad to do it.
You know, this is a real simple question. Mr. Rowe, I'll start out with a softball, I guess. If you could go back to the last option, option B. Prepare a revised recommendation utilizing the 2012 Bond Task Force report as a basis for additional work on the program, meaning adding to the questions, deleting from the questions, substituting?
We would take all the work that's been done to date, and we would either, working with staff and management group, or working with staff management and a citizens group, use that as the initial body of work. There may be projects that had additional funding from other sources that might be dropped from the program, but most likely it would be added to with any additional priorities that occur over the next year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rowe. Do we have any questions of Mr. Rowe on this? Or any direction that we'd like to, to give? Seeing none, okay, well, hit the button first, Councilwoman Clapp.
Well, we had this discussion before, and I haven't changed my mind. I still think that we should have the election in 2013. I think this year is not the year to be bringing forward questions to our citizens to fund these projects as, as needed as they are. I think 2013 would give us a much better idea of how the economy is improving, and it might give more comfort to the citizens on voting for these in 2013. And I don't believe they'll have any, have much desire to vote for them in 2012. So I would prefer a 2013 election.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Littlefield.
Well, if we're going to hold a bond election, we ought to hold it in 2012. Not only will we save $377,000, but we'll have a nice big turnout, and we'll see if people really want done. I think that's the right time to do it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I need to do it in 2012.
Here's the motion fails for lack of a second. Councilwoman Clapp.
I move that we hold a bond election in 2013.
Motion's been made, and second, we're the second late to speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor. I sure would like to go forward in 2012, and the group, the bond task force we assembled was an extraordinarily talented group that committed a lot of time and a lot of thoughtfulness to putting this together, and I think they are just the example of what citizens' involvement in local government should and could be. And so, you know, I'd love to move forward on 12, given the, the commitment they've made and the investment they made in this, but I think given the, the economy and, and what's going on, I think it's just best if we wait till 13. But I think their work will not go to waste, that it'll be a really sound foundation for us to come to the ballot in 13.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And my mistake, and a little late, but not forgotten, we do have a couple of requests to speak on this subject, so before we go any further, I'll start with Guy Phillips.
Mayor, would, would you get the motion clarified to say if it includes all four questions, or, or anything else for that matter?
Well, I'd be happy to do that at this point in time, and with the understanding that it could change. We, it could include all four questions, but I think there was an option up there for 2013 on how we would proceed if it's, if it would, if it would change a bit in 2013. So my motion would basically be to address the four questions with the understanding that there could be some changes in 2013. Before we actually put the, approve the questions, I'm sure it's going to have to come back to council.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman, for that clarification. And then Guy Phillips, if you would, followed by John Washington.
Mayor, members of council, Guy Phillips. I just wanted to point out here that I don't believe we should be asking the voters to cough up more money for items that should have been paid through the general fund, but instead of put on the back burner for special interest projects. If however you decide to go ahead and put a bond measure on the ballot, which it sounds like you're doing, I would ask that you at least direct staff to make sure that each bond item is presented through line item with an explanation, so that the public will see exactly what they're voting for. Grouping needed infrastructure repairs with someone's wish list is duping the public, something we are tired of seeing. As you've seen with the general plan update, citizens of Scottsdale are paying attention and will not tolerate more taxes for any special interest project which does not pay for itself. I recommend you defer to option B, special election, to allow more information to the voters.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Washington.
Mayor, members of the council, John Washington, 3518, North Chambers Court, just down the street in Peaceful Valley. You know, I've rang you guys several times about the, these bonds and how I didn't think you should, should do this, but you did, I mean, here we are anyway, in spite of that, in spite of all the public opposition to taxing the voters more for things that are of questionable significance to them directly. However, since you have decided to go ahead with this, why chicken out now? Let's go ahead and put it on the ballot, let's take a vote, and let's put this thing to rest, one way or the other. There's no point in postponing this until 2013. We've got everything that we need to have to present to the voters and let them make the decision, and they will decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. That completes the public comment on the issue. We do have the motion and the second on the table, but Councilman Littlefield.
Just like to point out that if you really want to respect the work of the bond commission, they're done, they finished, we should hold the election in 2012. If you wait till 2013, it looks like you're trying to manipulate the outcome.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, I think there's a couple of factors that weigh into this on, on the timing, as well as the content. Content is, has been Content is, has been just mentioned, in fact, is with an opportunity to review, and certainly to clarify. And the other is, frankly, if there is an effort to, to present it completely to the public, it would be given more time as far as that's concerned. But there's also the economic condition we're, we're living with, and certainly there's a sensitivity to the frame of mind right now with the economy as it is, that it would be more difficult for an additional consideration for, even for useful projects, for taxing for long-term capital projects, which is what bonds are for. It would just be, just that much more difficult, the decision to make. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to see this come back next year. I think the citizens' bond task force did a great job, and we have some excellent information. I don't think that the economic conditions are such that this is the best time to bring it forward. Plus, I think in a presidential election, this, this becomes, unfortunately, becomes an afterthought or not paid attention to like it should be, because I think it should be vetted, and the citizens should have a, a lot of opportunity to decide what they want to do. And when you have a, an election, as we do this year, I think it's difficult to give it the attention that deserves. And I'm, I don't understand, you know, daring the council to put something on the ballot so that you hope it fails. I don't understand how that moves our, our community forward. So I'm certainly in favor of bringing this back next year and making it the best bond program we could possibly do, and, you know, we paid for countless projects and built infrastructure here in Scottsdale for decades with bond elections. So it's ingrained in our city's history, and we've done that very well for a long period of time, so daring the council to put something on to fail, just, I just, it blows me away really, and I don't understand it, so. But I look forward to this coming back next year, and hope we can make it better.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Littlefield.
Well, if, if a bond election in November 2012 would be an afterthought, what does that say about the council-mayor elections? Would they be afterthoughts too? You can't have it both ways.
Thank you, Councilman. I see no further comments on this, and we do have a motion and a second on the table. It's been discussed. Those in favor, please indicate by aye, and register your vote. Those opposed with a nay, and register your vote.
Aye.
Motion passes five to one, with Councilman Littlefield opposing. That completes item 34 of the special election. We've already discussed the citizen petition, but do we have anything further? Sir, as a mayor-council item, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You have adjourned.
Always can count on you, Bob, for that. Thanks. Motion to adjourn, seconded, voted.
Yep.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Everyone.